that affect all of us. I pray for those you have placed in authority and ask your help in making wise and righteous decisions for the people of this county. I pray that you would guide them to your wisdom found in the pages of holy scripture and not in the wisdom of the world that leads men to stray from commandments, seeking selfish ambitions, ungodly ideals, and unholy agendas that ultimately destroy people, families, communities, and nations. I pray that you would cause conviction and repentance in the hearts of those that stand in arrogant opposition against you and continue to seek destruction of this nation. I humbly pray for our board of supervisors, for those that lead us, those that protect and serve us, and our sheriff's department, all county public servants, help us to do better in leaving behind a greater legacy of liberty and freedom for our children and grandchildren. May this prayer be acceptable in your sight, Lord God. We humbly pray in your loving Son, Jesus Christ's name, the name above every name. Amen.
May I mean the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held December 2nd, 2024 at 9:00 a.m.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Official business to come before the board. Number one, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Mr. Espin.
Good morning, Chairman. Nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay. Committee and our legislative reports. Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I attended the County Supervisors Association meeting in Phoenix last week where we welcomed in the 2025 president from Yuma County, Lynn Pancrasie. So I think Mojave County will still have good standing in the executive committee. Yuma County and Mojave County work pretty good together. That's it.
Okay. Supervisor Liam Felder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I want to share, and I hope I don't embarrass you too much, is our clerk of the board, Laura. Her son, Terrill Scoobel, who's a pitcher for the Detroit Tigers, made first team for the American League, and he's going to find out if he wins the Cy Young Award on Wednesday, which also happens to be his birthday. So we hope for the best.
Okay. That's it. Supervisor Gould.
Nothing today, Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing, Madam Chair.
And I too was at CSA. I think that Supervisor Bishop covered it. So we'll move on. Lobbyist report from high ground, Nick Ponder is here live in person.
Morning, Supervisors. Madam Chair, thank you again for the opportunity. Initially, let's start with an election update real quick. So I think that that's important as we know where we go forward in the legislative session. Prior to the election on Tuesday, I think what was anticipated did not bear out. What I think was anticipated is, at least in the Senate, close to a 15-15 tie. What we saw in the data is a lot of those late-breaking voters largely went conservative, and that swung a lot of the races in that direction. Ultimately, what happened was the House went from a 31-29 Republican majority to a 33-27 Republican majority. The Senate went from a 16-14 Republican majority to a 17-13 Republican majority. On Tuesday of last week, both bodies held their votes for leadership. In the House, Speaker Steve Montenegro was elected. He's from LD 29, which is in northwest Phoenix area. Surprise, Peoria, et cetera. Michael Carbone, LD 25, is the majority leader, and Julie Willoughby, LD 13, which is in the Chandler area, is the majority whip. I was just in Ms. Willoughby's office last week on a separate issue. I have a good relationship with her and then good relationships with Mr. Carbone working on issues for another client last year as well as Steve Montenegro. So I think we feel good about the leadership and the majority in the House. On the minority in the House, Oscar de los Santos was elected the minority leader, Assistant Minority Leader Gutierrez, with whips Cruz and Travers. I would argue that we have strong relationships with three of the four. Cruz is relatively new, so it's just about getting in her office a little bit more frequently. So that's a positive there. The House, the Republicans basically picked up three seats, LD 4, which is in central Phoenix, LD 13, which is in Chandler, and LD 16, which is in Pinal County. But then they lost one. The Democrats picked up one in LD 17, which is in the north Tucson, south Pinal County area. In the Senate side, Warren Peterson retained his presidency. He was the president the last cycle. Janay Shamp, LD 29, won the majority leader position. Frank Carroll, the whip. Very strong relationships with Mr. Carroll and Ms. Shamp. Mr. Peterson, obviously from Queen Creek, and you know our history with Queen Creek, poses a bit of a challenge, but we'll attempt to work around that. And then on the minority side, Priya Sunduration is the minority leader, Assistant Minority Leader Flavio Bravo, and Rosanna Gabeldon is the whip. Sunduration and Gabeldon are very knowledgeable historically on water issues, so they will be helpful in that particular scenario. With respects to, and then committee makeup. Right now, we don't know the committee makeups in the House yet. They have not been announced, but in the Senate, they have been announced. With respect to the Natural Resources Committee, Mr. Carroll is on natural resources. That's good. Tim Dunn from the Yuma area is on the Natural Resources Committee. I think that he will be workable on some of the issues that we are concerned about because he has similar concerns. Yuma has always been a strong partner on the Colorado River water issues as well, so that's good news there. With respect to water policy and what's going on, there will be, as I've mentioned multiple times, there will be a meeting this Friday in Wilcox for the potential to create a new active management area. That'll be the first active management area ever created by the director, if it is created next Friday. Actually, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. It won't be created next Friday. The hearing will be next Friday. They have 30 days to create it after the hearing. I apologize for that. I will also note that they have been, that there was a meeting in Hila County, in the Hila Basin, Hila Bend Basin, last year. Or I'm sorry, earlier this year, or last legislative session, in about April. So that could be another AMA coming up next year. And that is creating a lot of concern with some of the ag industry, with the potential of AMAs being created throughout the state. We also have another list of supply and demand studies that Mr. Lingenvelter has referenced multiple times that should come out here in the next month or two, which will give some direction to the department on other basins that might be at risk. So that's an important meeting coming up on Friday. And then on December 2nd, the governor has called a meeting for her reconvening of her governor's Water Policy Council. We don't have the agenda yet for that. I would imagine it's going to be to talk about some agriculture-to-urban water issues in AMAs, about how they convert that. But I don't, I would not be surprised if there was also some agenda items on rural groundwater conversations. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ponder? Supervisor Bishop? Supervisor Liam Felder?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the update, Nick. You didn't mention the AG's office getting, she's actually stepped into more of the Colorado River issues, which I have found interesting. She's actually going to be going after some of these large corporate farms under the nuisance laws.
That's correct.
Interesting. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah. Madam Chair, Supervisor Lingenvelter. So the, obviously, the initial involvement for the AG was our impetus on the Colorado River issue with respect to Queen Creek and her engagement in the Amicus brief. But she continues to be engaged on the Colorado River issues as we go forward. In addition, it's both Colorado River and groundwater issues that she's focusing on and potentially using state nuisance law to go after these people who are excessively pumping water out of the basin and putting the rest of the residents in that basin at risk. It was alluded to in a news article last week that she is likely to go after the Saudi farm in Vicksburg, which is in La Paz County, to address some issues there with their exploitation of the groundwater. So she continues to look at that as we go forward. I would anticipate, she's also gone down to Wilcox to talk about the nuisance issues. I know that the farm down there had some great concerns about that. So it's highly political whether or not people support what she's doing or not, but she has been focused on water since early on in her campaign.
Yep. And then on the groundwater side, I think what our concern is, or my concern is really is, you know, in 2022, the legislature, they actually expanded and compelled ADWR to start coming out with at least six of these supply and demand assessments on Arizona basins every year. And what the statute says now is they have to have an updated supply and demand assessment on every single basin within the state on a revolving five-year basis. So the reason that we haven't seen a lot more subsequent active management areas in Arizona being established is because they haven't had that data. And so, you know, this last year, I think they came out with seven. This year, they're coming out with at least 10 or 11. And I think the concern is for rural Arizona, that doesn't see the AMAs as a good one-size-fits-all fit for all of our basins is, if we don't have some sort of a third rural customizable, adaptable framework, that we're going to start to see a lot of these AMAs pop up with these supply and demand assessment reports. So hopefully, we can all work together at the Capitol this next year and come out with something balanced. Obviously, we want to work with the Republicans as they introduce bills, but as long as the governor holds veto power, we have to have something that's going to be able to be signed. So hopefully, we have a lobbyist and we're able to work on that.
Madam Chair and Supervisor, to your point, the AG actually wrote a note to the Department of Water Resources early on in her tenure. The 1980 Groundwater Management Act requires that the department periodically review basins. And in her letter to the department, she said in 43 years, you've only reviewed two basins. And so she was asking them why effectively they hadn't. The Supply-Demand Study in 2022 gives a little bit of a different analysis, but it still provides an inflow-to-outflow, and that's why those reports are so important.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Supervisor Johnson? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So now county managers' report. Do we have anything this morning?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board members. No report today.
Okay, very good. So now we will go to the, let's do the proclamations first. Is that okay? We have the first proclamation, to proclaim November 2024 is National American Indian Heritage Month in Mojave County, Arizona, and that's brought by the Havasu Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution would like to take a photo with the board. So is that for that one, right? Okay, so. Right, I understand that, but I thought maybe they would come down and read it. But, okay, so I need a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll do the second one, too, because they want to take a photo. This is a presentation of the National Procurement Institute, 2024 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement at AEP Awards, the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the Mojave County Procurement Department, who is going to, oh, there she is.
It's not upside down. It was upside down.
Their award to add to your wall of awards.
Yes. Good morning. Let me get this presentation loaded. I don't see it. Oh, there we go. I'll keep it brief. I know that we have a very busy board meeting today, so I've got four or five slides to go through. I will go through them quickly, so there they are. They're up and live. So this is the presentation of our Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. We refer to it as the AEP. I have my whole staff here with me today. We shut down the office for the 15, 20 minutes that we would be here. And there's a couple of things. A lot of times, I think people see these awards as if you apply, you get them. That is not the case. This is an award that has continuously evolving criteria. They update things frequently. Mojave County's actually applied and not received it in the past, and so I'm very proud of the fact that in my tenure, we've received it every single time. I use it for benchmarking and for performance measures. It's actually a really good practice to go through every single year and see how we line up on the criteria. So there's a total of 200 points available. You have to receive at least 100 in order to get the award. And there have been times that we've been very close. There have been times that we haven't actually gotten all 100. When you look at how Mojave County compares to the United States and Canada, and how Mojave County compares to other agencies in Arizona, we are one of 27 Arizona agencies that have received the award since 1996, when it was first started. We're only one of 12 that received it this year, and there are only two counties that got it this year. This is our sixth consecutive and our 19th overall. And then when you look at the nation as a whole plus Canada, 72 cities, 49 counties, 39 school districts, higher education, 32 special districts, and then five states and provinces have applied and received the award this year. Arizona agencies that have received the award, there are six cities. One I worked for, one Supervisor Lingenvelter worked for, City of Tucson, has actually received it every single year since its inception. The City of Tempe, Chandler, Mesa, Flagstaff, Sierra Vista, and Scottsdale recently got it for the first time in several years this year. There's two counties right now, Mojave County and Pima County. And then two educational institutions, the Arizona State University and the Tucson Unified School District got their first award ever this year. And then the one special district, the Central Arizona Project. Consecutive awards received, again, City of Tucson has received it for 29 years since its inception. There's a few cities and Pima County that have received it for 20 years. Mojave County would have been a 20-year recipient if we hadn't not received it back in 2018. The CAPs, they had it for 17 years, ASU for 16, Mojave County 6. Everyone else has been within the last couple of years, and a few did not apply this year. A couple of new things for Mojave County. We did get an additional five points for continuous improvement doing training. We didn't get this last year because we hadn't done training within the year. This is something my staff is working on, and we're hoping to do annual trainings, sort of a procurement 101 in looking at some of our systems. And then the other one that we got, we got an additional 20 points this year. Thank you Supervisor Johnson for supporting software, for the use of e-procurement software, automated technology. This is the first time ever we've qualified for these points that have to do with electronic sourcing and electronic evaluations. And then a couple other things to note. Our submittal is actually being used as a model submittal for three criteria for the 2025 application process. We got a model submittal for criteria three, which has to do with establishing professional development plans for our staff. And then we got a model submittal for criteria six, which is about organizational structure where the procurement department is placed within the overall organization. So thank you for respecting procurement and trusting us to do a good job. And then this is the most points we've received on record. I can go back about 10 years, and 135 points is the most that we've received that we can see the history of. So with that, we are wanting to do a photo off with you. We'll let you do your proclamation first, and then my staff will get up and take photos with you, present you with the award, and we just appreciate the opportunity to share it with you.
Thank you very much. So we need a motion? Do we need a motion for this?
This was just a presentation.
This presentation. So we'll go down there and take both pictures. So if the people from the Havasu Chapter, the Daughters of the American Revolution, can make their way down, we'll do it right after the procurement.
Then you get back to work. Procuring.
You got to get him back to work.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go to the consent agenda. Items 5 through 54. The following items listed will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of items unless a board member requests. Supervisor Bishop?
Nothing.
Supervisor Liam Felder?
Nothing to support, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Gould?
Number eight, number 11, and number 45.
45?
45.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson?
Nothing, Madam Chair.
And 45 is the canvas. Want to talk about the canvas? 44. So I need a motion to approve items 5 through 54 minus 8, 11, 44, and 45.
So made.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm just curious what was going on here. And it looks like Scott has come up to explain it.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, this item is just to inform the board. I think in June, we went to the board to ask for a renewal with the ISA that we had in place with the state for their inspection program on manufactured homes. Part of that process was is we needed to go through some training, update some of our websites, kind of go through a process with the state to get the standards that they had with the county. We went through that process. We got all of our inspectors trained. We got the website updated. In the meantime, they hired an inspector for the Mojave County area and have been performing those inspections within Mojave County. We've contacted all of the manufactured home installers. They are very pleased with the service that the state has been providing. Mojave County took this program over in, I think it was 2007. I think I put it in the backup. Quite some time ago, we took it over just to help with the inspection process because we were seeing quite a bit of delays with the state inspecting the manufactured homes. With that, we've been renewing it several years. We went through the renewal process this time, and they wanted us to update some stuff. But in the meantime, hired their own inspector and have been performing those inspections on a regular basis without any complaints from our installers. It's actually been a little bit of a relief for our staff because we're able to do our inspections just on the single-family residential home side and the commercial side a lot easier without having to do some of these manufactured home inspections. With that, the state, I spoke with the state a few weeks ago, and they indicated that because the program is running well under their direction, they would like to keep that program. And so at this time, they're going to continue to run the inspection program. We are just informing the board that we're not going to be entering that ISA with them and happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Director Holtry, what does the state inspect? The actual siding of the mobile home?
Yes.
That it's set properly? Are inspectors still going to do the plot plan and the utilities, though, won't they?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, that's correct. We'll still do the utilities. They'll still apply for a permit through Mojave County, and they're currently doing that to see the setbacks, to see the utilities. The state is inspecting the structure itself and that it's set correctly and that it's to HUD standards, the state standards.
So if they have any additional patios, patio covers, that kind of stuff, that still falls on our inspector, correct?
Correct. That goes through the county.
Thank you, sir. Too bad the state didn't decide to keep their program before we ran our people through training.
That would have been, that would have been nice to know, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion.
Doesn't need a motion.
Information only?
Oh, okay. Number 11. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm curious, what is our family planning program?
Family planning is a grant-funded program that provides well-women checks, sexually transmitted infection, testing and treatment, and birth control.
What was the first thing?
Well-women checks.
Okay. So at no cost?
I don't think there's. Just a moment, please.
Because you would think if it's low income, that access would be covering the state Medicaid program.
My nursing manager, Lynn Valentine, is going to come up and speak to that.
Good morning. For most of our participants, it is because it's a program designed for underinsured and uninsured individuals. It's based on their personal income and based on where they are per the federal poverty threshold. And that determines if there's a fee involved and not, or not. But most of our participants, it's free of charge, yes.
So it's free if they're below the federal poverty standard?
There's certain levels, and if they exceed it by a certain percentage, then it's a certain percentage that they pay. I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, otherwise I'd be able to tell you. But it's all dependent on where they fall in that scale.
It kind of sounds like it's a double program.
If they're insured, if they have access, then they are not eligible for our services.
Do you check to see whether they're enrolled in access?
We do not check. That's part of the program guidelines. We have to go by what they tell us.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Chairman. Motion to deny?
Motion to deny. Is there a second to that denial? Anyone? Hearing none, motion fails. I need a motion to approve. Anyone?
Motion to approve.
I need a second. I'll second that. We have a motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Number 44. This is the.
45.
I know, but I took 44 out.
Sorry.
Somebody had signed up to speak to this.
That's interesting. Didn't pull.
I was going to pull it anyway.
Good job.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. I'm Elaine Downing. I'm the chair for the Mojave County Democrats. I just wanted to congratulate the County Elections Department and the county recorder and all the workers that worked on this election. I think I was observing one aspect of it or another. And this is the first time in my life I've been involved in politics. And they're squared away. And I hope, I'm leaving Arizona. My mom's got Alzheimer's. I'm heading back to California. But I hope in the future, Mojave County can heal the division that is happening in this county and tearing families apart. And maybe we can all realize we're in this boat together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. All right, is there? Yeah.
I have some questions.
For our lectos, is Allen here? Allen Temper? Come on down. You thought you were going to get away unscathed? Kidding me?
I also want to ask our clerk, Laura, have we received any threatening letters this morning?
Not today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lydia's coming down, too.
That's good, because Lydia runs a lot of it on.
Lydia runs the elections. She does. She's here. Get over here. Okay. There you go. Absolutely.
So I don't know who this question is to. Why are they updating the electronic poll books the night before the election?
That's for me. It's a wonderful question. The reason we're updating is because of all the early ballots that have been requested and/or sent in or, you know, acknowledged coming in. So when people go to the polls on Election Day, the poll workers can see on the poll books whether or not somebody was sent an early ballot, and if that early ballot has already been. already been received. Otherwise, if it has not been received, the voter's allowed to vote the ballot as any other normal voter, and it will never be counted. That is standard practice, and it works wonderfully.
When is the cutoff for, to request mail ballots?
Lydia?
That was on October 25th for this election. So we work the whole weekend prior to election day. We process everything we have. We do additional USPS runs to pick up anything from the post office. All the drop boxes and the last day of early voting, we work that whole weekend to gather all of those early ballots, signature verify them, and have them in the receive status. We then give that to Allen Monday morning, and then we run our reports of who's still eligible to vote.
Thank you. Are the electronic poll books, do they have a battery? Will they run without line electricity?
No, I got you. No, absolutely, they have a battery. They are computers. Now let me tell you why the batteries weren't working in a couple of places, well mainly Golden Valley, if that's the direction you're heading. You heading that way?
They're just general, we had a glitch, and I'm trying to figure out why some of these things, it seems strange to me to be updating the electronic poll book the night before the election.
It's not strange. I'm just being, it is the right thing. They pushed 85,000 records through the night before the election. Otherwise, nobody would know whether anybody ever voted early or not and if it was acknowledged. That's the standard practice, and it works very well.
It seems problem, it seems like a potential for failure.
There's a lot of potential for failure and lots of stuff.
Sure.
Yeah.
With the way that we run, our system runs now, there is quite a bit of potential for failure.
Okay.
So the, will the battery last the whole time?
If the power was on...
Seven to seven?
If the power was on all night long, the batteries on the poll books would last it all day long.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We also need to think about emergency lighting if we have a power outage.
Got it. Can I tell you something?
Sure. Please do.
Well, please, thank you. There you go. No, I have never been prouder to be a Mojave County resident in my life than this election. I get a call at 20 after 5:00 in the morning, "Power's out down in Golden Valley," our second-largest voting place in the county. And it can't go anywhere else because, you know, it's a single standalone, right? Beautiful. It's at the fire training station. Well, I get to, at 5:00 o'clock, I'm down there at 5:20, and I walk in, it's totally dark, and there's people all out in the parking lot. And then somebody yells, "You can't go there, the power's out." I say, "I know. I'm from the elections department." Some lady yells, and I go, "Oh, thank goodness, Allen's here." They heard my voice. So I'm happy that people know who I am, right? So I went in there, and my poll workers had already had everything broken down, ready to move, everything outdoors in the dark to start checking people in, right? So I said, "Okay." They listened to me, like every single thing. It's not like I came and took total command of the situation, right? They were ready to work. Now, I had 50 people lined up to vote by 5:30 that night for a 6:00 start time. I told people, "We're open till 7:00 o'clock, you can come back. You can stay here and wait. I know this will be resolved pretty soon because they're working on getting the power restored." The problem was, the power was out, and went out during the night, and it killed the poll books because they were on all night long because they're there for the, you know, that's what we're leading into, okay? So, I mean, sure. So I have these people standing in line, and not one snide remark coming my way. I mean, they might have, I might not have heard it. Oh, my God. But overall, people stood behind me, stood in line, people with canes and stuff, too, you know? "Can we at least come in? It's cold, Allen." I heard a lady say, "Absolutely, you can come in." And they all wafted off to the side. We had the power. I didn't restore the power. What the heck do I know? I know how to plug a plug in. You know what I mean? But the power restored by 7:00 o'clock by, I guess it was Unisource or whoever's the power supplier, you know, I think it's, my brain goes, by 7:00, and we had generators brought in from the fire department, which we were able to pull books on. So I was so proud when I walked out of there because of the poll workers and the voters. And they stood behind me, and they weren't ready to kill me for something I had nothing to do with. I'm not the power guy, right? So I'm just trying to say in general, "Yeah, I got it." And I called emergency management, and Joe Dorner, I got him up at 5:00 in the morning, was probably up waiting and worrying, but you know, "Well, we're gonna try to get generators done, we're gonna try to get lighting done." You know what I did? I took my car, drove it inside the location, and turned on my headlights where people could vote. I wish I took a picture of it. I was gonna use that on all future training sessions. Honest to God, my little Camry, 1998, thank God the battery's good because I almost didn't get it started when I left. So it was neat. I mean, it was, made me so proud and happy.
Yeah, and you handled it well.
Thank you.
I agree, but these are questions that the public needs to know the answers to, that they won't know the answers to if I don't ask you the question in a public meeting.
I got it, and I'm not doing, I'm just saying, I'm glad you asked me because I just wanted to say that.
But we, in the future, we probably need to have some generators lined up in case that happens. I still have, the updating of the day before the election, I think, I still think that's problematic. Let's, what else did I have? Did you backup lighting?
Come over here.
Did we do the, did we do the test hand count?
Oh, absolutely, we did. You wanna hear about that?
Sure.
Wonderful. It took a day and a half to do. We had, we had two voting precincts each having about 1,300 ballots being cast between 12, 1,300. It took, we had five races that got counted by hand. That's only five races out of 30. You gotta think about that, okay? So five races out of two voting precincts plus 700 early ballots got counted. It took until the second day. We started at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday after the election, ended at 5:20 Saturday night, came back in on Sunday morning 8:00 o'clock, and finished at 1:00 o'clock. So it took quite a long time. It was dead on except two.
Good job.
Thank you. It was wonderful.
And the reason that we do the test hand count is to check the voting tabulation machines?
We validate. That's exactly right.
And most of the public is unaware that we do that?
Yeah, it's a shame.
And we did that, I think we put that into effect in 2005.
And you're right.
Uh, let's see. So we had an issue with, we've used the libraries as early polling places, and then we have voters that think that they can go vote there on election day. So to me, that's somewhat of a problem. We should probably use those as polling places, and at least there would be somebody there to tell the people if that was not their poll to go where their poll was. They had signs on the, at the library at Lake Havasu, and I sat there personally from about 4:30 to about 5:30, making sure that people came up, saw the sign, and to answer any questions for them. But they had a lot of trouble at the Bullhead Library. There wasn't any signs. Hundreds of people went there. They were being directed there by another place. But we probably need to come up with some play to make that smoother because we've got a condition that's where you go to vote in early voting, but so they continue to go there rather than reading the information, and we need to prepare for people that do not read the information.
So we leave a sandwich board at every location. Kingman, Havasu, and Bullhead with a large sign that says, "Attention voters, stop. This is no longer a voting location. To contact the elections department, the recorder's office, voter registration, or to find your polling location online." We also always say, "Early voting ends on Friday. Many people go over the weekend." We publicize it a lot this election, but unfortunately, it doesn't meet, reach everyone.
Sure. But we still need to deal with it, all those things that we do, and we still have a couple hundred people that went to the Bullhead Library to vote.
We're very thankful for the library allowing us to be there already for the 27-day period. I'm not sure that...
You're also speaking to the board of the library district here, so...
Yeah. I know it's a lot of work for the library to host in-person early voting. We had the political parties putting tents in the easy upsout in the parking lot outside in the 75-foot. Like, there were a lot of things this election at the libraries that we didn't think were going to happen. I think we dealt with them as they came along to the best of our ability, but things to think of in the future.
Sure. So I don't like putting notes on a phone. Let's see. So did we end up having two people carry the ballots from the poll? I know we found out that the early votes, the early polls do not have to have two people carrying the ballots, which is weird, and I think is an oversight by the legislature. But we found out that we are supposed to have two people, except in what, it's not an emergency, but in extreme circumstances, we can use one person to carry those ballots. Did we end up using two people?
Absolutely. They were actually lining up to do it. So you gotta like that. No, we did. Thank you for bringing that to me last.
And pens in the tabulation room? So people were watching the camera of the tabulation room and saw pens in the tabulation room and were concerned with that?
Sorry, they're concerned. Don't they trust me or my staff? The tabulation room is the most secured room in this building. The tabulation room is under 24-hour surveillance and being streamed. What did they see us do? Absolutely nothing. And there's no rules, laws, or statutes against it. I need to have pens for administrative purposes. Every 20 minutes, we save a batch of 600 ballots. We write down on a sheet of paper, 600, to keep our records going. We take and write with the pens onto jump drives, which we put into the election computer each night. If people wanna be concerned about that, I'm so sorry, but I need pens to operate. There ain't a pen in the tabulation room right now, I guarantee you.
What's in the tabulation room now?
Well, three tabulators and a whole lot of ballots. All locked up and sealed up.
Right.
Under camera.
I'm sure you understand that people are concerned with how elections are run.
Oh, yes.
And it is somewhat, I found it interesting that there was pens in there, since we vote with pens, the ballots are marked with pens at the poll. So I don't know if there's something else that we could use, a different special-colored pen in the tabulation room. Statute doesn't require it.
Maybe a crayon?
Crayon? I got you. Yes.
But I'm reading, these concerns came from the public. These are not just Supervisor Gould's annoying personality traits that were on display here.
I've known Supervisor Gould...
These are questions that came from either people that were working the poll, people that were watching the cameras and whatnot, and people are rightly concerned because they, you've had an issue of trust and not, I trust you, and you do, you guys both do a great job, let me tell you, put that on the record right now. But every time, there's always things that we could do better on. Thank you. Text message. There's always things that was, snatches or snafus are gonna come up. You know, we've been a state for over 100 years, and you'd think we would cover, we would have everything covered, but we don't. But I wanna thank you both for the great job that you did personally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Director Temper, I just wanna say thank you to you, your staff, all the volunteers. Without all of you, our elections would not be possible, and I'm very proud of the way our elections in Mojave County are run. And to our recorder, I wanna say thank you for the work that you're taking upon yourself to clean our voter rolls up. I've been watching that. It's important. I think it's more important than people give it credit for. Thank you for the work that you both do, and all of your staff and volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Supervisor Bishop? Anything? No?
Make a motion that we approve the canvas.
Okay, before, I wanted to thank you again. I was watching very carefully this one. It really is run very well. There's always gonna be a few hiccups, few human errors, but on the, on the whole, I think you did a tremendous job. So now we have a motion to approve the canvas of the election and the adoption of the board's supervisor resolution number 2024-134.
I moved that we approved the canvas.
Second.
So we have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. Next. Okay, item 45.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
I'd just like to take a moment to thank all the volunteers that worked the polls and the elections.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Supervisor Bishop. All right, item 45, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This bill, it has to do with continued Californication of Arizona. The legislature, in their infinite wisdom, decided to pass a scheme to license off-road vehicle drivers. A driver's license is now not good enough to drive a off-road vehicle. You have to go, we're gonna have to take a test. So I'm gonna be tested on how do you operate a rural gate. So I have to, which is similar because I learned that from getting a hunting license, is if a gate is closed, when you go through it, you close it. If a gate is open, when you go through it, you leave it open. But I'm gonna have to go take a test now to get an OHV certification so I can drive my off-road vehicle. Frankly, I think this is ridiculous, and it all grew out of a licensing scheme on off-road vehicles because they were afraid that people weren't paying the sales tax on the off-road vehicles. But, and so now the sheriff has to expend sheriff's deputies to go and police the, police the desert also on top of this. But I just think it's, because there's about $128,000 in deputy labor to go do, to go do this. But I just think it's ridiculous, and I'm gonna go ahead and move to support it, but I think the legislature needs to stop trying to protect me from myself. I can ride a, I can ride a motorcycle on the street without wearing a helmet. I can make that choice. I think it's unwise, but that's still my own freedom. You're policing things that don't need your policing. I'm a big boy. I had a mother. The state is not my mama.
And your off-road issues. Okay. So are we gonna do a motion to approve?
I just was given time for other people to...
Madam Chair? Okay.
Yeah, is the item sponsor able to talk about this item? Anybody from the sheriff's office?
Madam Chair, Sheriff Schuster.
There he is.
Sheriff?
Good morning. Madam Chair, Supervisor Lingefelter, and to address Supervisor Gould, very good points. I understand his position. I don't have any control over what the Arizona legislation does. However, this is funding that we always try and seek outside of the general fund to enhance our abilities. It's not just to patrol the desert. We have numerous incidents out in the desert, like accidents and areas that's very difficult to get to in our four-wheel-drive patrol vehicles. So we saw this as an opportunity. This is not a full-time assignment for my deputies. I'm not putting people, our deputy sheriffs, out in the desert on a regular basis, but often throughout the years, we get a significant amount of traffic out in the desert area here in Mojave County, and we need to have access to it. So anytime we see a grant opportunity that comes to us with no matching, we're gonna pursue that, and I appreciate Supervisor Gould's position, and I hope that you would understand the nature of this request and approve it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sheriff Schuster, thank you for that description. I think my questions would really center on keeping Mojave County Mojave County and the way that you're going to be administering this. An example of that would be, I think, a lot of Californians come to Mojave County to recreate in our lakes because, you know, we actually let them have fun, and it's not And it's not over, overregulated like it is on their waterways. And similar to the off-road vehicles, how is your staff going to be administering this to make sure that we, we keep Mojave County Mojave County?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Lingefelter, great question. So this is just another tool in our arsenal. These vehicles will be available on a need-to-use basis. We do have some funding through this grant that'll allow us to actually spend some time out in the desert, separate from our budgeted overtime. So it's, it's always good to have that visibility. We want to make sure, obviously, that our voting public, our desert users are safe. And that a lot of times, just the presence of law enforcement helps reassure and helps people understand that there are laws that regulate operation of every type of, you know, motorized vehicle. And the end game is we want people to come to Mojave County. We are very tourist-oriented. We try and treat everybody with respect and courtesy, but we are going to enforce the law. And these are actually a tremendous asset for us. I touched on some of the desert incidents, but as you're all aware, we have a very robust search and rescue program, a volunteer program. We get hundreds of calls for service every year. In many instances, we will send deputies to support. And there have been many occasions where the location is just so primitive that we can't get to the scene. So these are going to augment our fleet very, very nicely. And thank you for the question.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anyone else? Second. So you seconded it? Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I was going to go right back to the call to public, which we had, I put off, I was requested some other things. And I have been requested for item 57. There are people on the line, Tammy Ursonback. And then I'll get right to the call to public after this item. So 57 is a, I have to open the public hearing. This is discussion of possible action to approve the adoption of board's super resolution number 2024-188, establishing a fee schedule for businesses applying for entry. And this is for the foreign trade zone, in the proposed Mojave County foreign trade zone. Okay, so I have nobody signed up for this one. Anyone wish to speak on this? Seeing none, I close the public hearing now. Tammy?
Motion approved.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Do you, did you want to say something? You've been sitting here. Is there somebody on the phone?
There is.
Okay, okay. Easy. All right, we have a motion second to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to go to the call of public. I'm going to open the call to public. First one up is Chris Rodardi. Chris, is she here?
Chris Rodardi, Mojave County taxpayer. After this board's meeting of November 4th and the vote in favor of the Peker plant, I am compelled to repeat Proverbs 29:2. When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when a wicked man rules, the people groan. I do not own property in Mojave Valley, so to that extent, I don't have a dog in this fight. But I have a pit bull in the ring to defend the voice of we, the people. On that day, a large group of residents, determined to preserve and protect their property rights, showed up to protest this theft. Sadly, the rights of these people were dismissed and tossed aside. Interestingly, the members on this board who voted for the rezone will be leaving in 2025. So accountability goes right out the door alongside them. The election of November 5th on the national level was amazing. We, the people, went to the polls and voted en masse to preserve the republic. Most of America is still celebrating and rejoicing the election of President Trump. But all politics are local, and Mojave County, we have a long, long way to go. I am skeptical and uninspired by the county and state's election results. In my opinion, the primaries left us with lackluster choices. However, no amount of gaslighting, disrespect, or smug elitism directed at the people you were elected to represent can silence our voices. You work for us as our public servants. By all legal means afforded by our great Constitution and God-inspired Bill of Rights, we remain determined to stand courageously strong. And in the immortal words of Maga 47, "Fight, Fight, Fight." Thank you.
Well, Board, I saw a miracle this last weekend. I saw Jeanne Kinch driving her own private vehicle. Anyway, Buster Johnson, I want to thank you before you get away from us. We're bringing the, making the motion to bring the fairgrounds under your control. We were messing around down there, shirping. Anyway, you guys know what you did, and you did a unanimous vote. And I'm telling you what, it's the best motion I've heard you guys make up here. And Buster, you made the motion. It's night and day out there now. Lautowski and his crew have done a wonderful job. And go down there and look, and maybe you didn't see it before. The weeds aren't this tall anymore. They're, you know, actually down by the ground now where they mow them and stuff, you know? They painted. They've done a lot of things. But the second thing I want to thank you, Buster, is putting number 68 on this agenda today. And hopefully, when we get our grand jury back, I have, I'm trying to put on, trying to get a civil grand jury, which is a different animal. They do not indict. They do the investigations and present the things to the board, and you guys make the recommendations. Maybe we already started the process of fixing that DHHS department, or the school superintendent needs to straighten up or whatever. It's a different thing. They don't do murder cases. They don't do that kind of things. They do not indict. They come before you. And I'm going to try, along with Ashley Garrick, and we have had a meeting with Steve Moss about a year ago. And it takes the legislature down in Sacramento, or Sacramento, I'm from California, as you can tell, Phoenix, takes the legislature to do this. California has 58 civil grand juries. First, we got to get ours back, though. And I hope you guys go for, I'm giving my time to Walter here. He's been working on this for a year or two, along with some other people. And I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Betford?
For the record, Greg Betford from Yucca sees Supervisor Angus couldn't stay around again for me.
I'm here.
It's because the mortal enemy of the lies is the truth. And I'm here, and she can't face the truth. That degree in, in theater and drama has done her well. She's masqueraded as a Republican, as a conservative, as a Jew. And I'm here to see her out the door. I didn't get a resignation, nor did I get the ones from the other two that I asked for. And I'm talking about the, follow my podcast, Desert Sage Podcast. The lie that she brought forward about Israel's, framed the proclamation, Israel's right to defend itself is a lie. We know it now. It's about the Greater Israel Project, and I told you about that. And I talked about Netanyahu and him bringing this thing forward at the UN. I talked about the Jewish influence and control. And again, people need to understand, what is a Jew? Is it an ethnicity? Is it a race? Is it a religion? Is it a nation-state? What's a Zionist? Go do the research yourself. But most people have been spoon-fed, either by your religious leaders or your politicians, that they're our greatest ally in the Middle East. Four of you support or supporting genocide. By what your actions and what you did, you're supporting the genocide that's taking place over there. Just no different in COVID, the genocide that she says was the greatest crime ever committed, by her own admission. I talked, and then you talk about the Jewish influence or the Zionist influence in Congress. These are cabinet positions. These are Biden's staff, all Jewish. Look at the control that AIPAC has over Congress. You know, over the media. Look at the media control. Over banking. You know? I never ask anybody to, you know, don't believe a damn word that I say. I tell people that. Don't believe anything I have to say. Go do the research yourself. But people are too lazy, they're ignorant, they're apathetic, and they're cowardly. The lion, the tin man, and the scarecrow, if you want to use that allegory. Go seek the truth on your own. Go find out if what I'm saying is true. She has the psychological and emotional maturity of a six-year-old. She can't even sit here and face the truth because she can't handle it. I could talk about other influences, not so good ones, to include abortion. Abortion is a fundamental Jewish value. So don't, people need to understand the difference between the Jews and all Jews. Not all Jews are on board with this, the democide.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
I'll be back.
Good morning, Jennifer Esposito Kingman. Just like to say, the new issue of the Mojave Free Press is out. I think I failed to mention last month, when the first issue came out, that every issue has a county board report. So that those people who don't watch on YouTube can find out what you guys did and how you voted, because I think they deserve to know that, especially when certain people will be up for reelection. So enjoy. It's on the street, it's online, mojavefreepress.blogspot.com, if you want to click on the pictures, or Mojave Free Press on Facebook. But know that what you do will be told to 10,000 people. I'm just going to restate that. I would like to point out something that I thought was a bit odd, is consent agenda, consent agenda item number five, ratify special event liquor license. But the event date was November 11th. This might come as a shock to some people, but we're past that date. So it appears to me that the county manager, oopsie, forgot to put it on a previous agenda, and that you guys just ratified an event that took place without a legal liquor license. Bravo. Well done. Also, at the last meeting, that debacle over the Peker plant, I want to remind you guys, realize some of you are leaving us, and that's probably a good thing, except for Chairman Angus, who I'm horrified is going to be representing us at the state level. But as far as this board goes, you are, when you sit on this board, you're here to represent and, and secure the rights of the people. And when the people come and say, don't do this, you're violating our rights, you're voting for a special interest cause, whether it be the Peker plant, whether it be a solar project on somebody's land, you only have the rights that come with your land with the zoning that you have. You have no right to a rezone. Read the Constitution, both the US and the Arizona constitutions. I didn't see a right to a rezone anywhere in there. Yet, this board has people on planning and zoning who just rubber stamp everything and go, but property rights, well, they have the right to do what they want with their property. But no, they actually don't, especially when they diminish the rights of their neighbors. You know, people who bought their property with certain zoning restrictions and had an expectation of what their future would be like. So hopefully, whoever is coming in in January will make new appointments to planning and zoning, because we really kind of need to shake that thing up, I think, at this point. And, you know, I just, I want to say that I do support Mr. Walter Spars' proposition. Had I been elected to this board, I would have absolutely placed it on the agenda. I think it's a good thing. But it just seems like this board has lost its way. So I look forward to spending the next couple of years letting people know what you're up to and trying to hold you accountable and make sure that you uphold your oath to the Constitution. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the call to public. Now we're going to go back to item 55, another public hearing. So I'm going to open that public hearing. This is a discussion of possible action to approve and authorize the chairman of the board to execute change order number 38 to the Servout Landfill Operations Contract Agreement. We have nobody signed up to speak. Anybody? Anybody? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Opening up the public hearing for item 56, this is a discussion of possible action to approve and authorize the chairman of the board to execute another change order to the Mojave Valley landfill operations contract. Anyone? I have nobody signed up. Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none? Closing the public hearing.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a question.
I believe this goes through, it's not through procurement. I think it, yeah, I think it's. Director Holtry, how old is the underlying contract?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, the underlying contract, I believe, was established in the 80s. I think it was like 1983 or something like that. I would have to verify, but it's, it's pretty old.
So we've extended a contract for 40 years?
It's, it's been quite a bit. That's why we're, we're wanting to go out to bid. But before we do that, we want to make sure the contract is right. So we're going to be revisiting the contract. That's why we're going to take one, one more year. That's the, part of the item is to extend the contract for one more year. We'll be looking at other counties, other jurisdictions, looking at their contract. We do feel that the contract has been able to serve our purposes and our needs, but I do believe it is out of date. And that's why we're taking a very close look at the contract and hopefully going to be able to have procurement take it on from now on as well. But we'll take one year looking at the contract, and then we'll send it out to bid.
I had met with the contractor, and he said that the contract is out, very outdated, marked up, really needs revision.
Correct.
So we need to make sure that that gets done and that we don't come back next year and, and extend a 40-year-old contract to be a 41-year-old contract.
Absolutely. That's what we're working on right now.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I believe we do, yes.
Thank you, Chairman.
Oh, okay. So we have a motion. Did we get a second on that? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We did 57. 58, I'm going to open the public hearing. Discussion of possible action to approve the amendment to Mojave County Local Ordinance 99-05, authorizing the increase of the court enhancement fee from $10 to $20 to help cover the Justice Court annual automation costs. I have no, oh, I do have one person signed up, and that is James Jones.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. James Jones, Kingman, Arizona, sovereign. I am against this addition of fees. I think the court should be a little bit more frugal and watch their Ps and Qs. I'm on a very, very tight budget as a social security recipient, and I know what being frugal means. So just throwing out there, let's increase and cost more money for other people, I think should be taken in great consideration of the poor people, which nobody seems to look at. So I'm totally against the court fees. Let the courts be a little bit frugal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, this was brought by Dave Huerta. Is he here?
In 2020, revenue collected was almost $95,000. Went down to 66, or 67,000, down to 60,000, then up to 77,500 and 77,300 in '24. Is this $10 being collected on everything that it's allowed to be collected on?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, this was created in the early 2000s, and it's assessed to any criminal fines and/or civil traffic fines. It has been charged or received from those fines from anybody who's been assessed those
How would we explain that? Has crime gone away since 2020, when we collected $95,000 and now we're down to 73,000?
Well, Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, if you remember, COVID started back then, there was specific requirements, specifically of law enforcement, to potentially avoid contacting people if they didn't have to do it. From what I understand, especially during some of the more severe times of COVID, it was recommended, do not pull over people unless you absolutely positively had. it was recommended do not pull over people unless you absolutely positively had to. During that time, the jail was asking law enforcement not to book people into the jail. So there might have been some individuals that might have got extra warnings than they had in the past. So there was also a decline in law enforcement during that time period. So there's obvious, there's assorted reasons why there was less revenue and why it's now starting to increase some. I guess the best way to foresee the future is look at the past. These fines or some of these fines may be specific more for our local courts, which took a big hit back in those years and maybe created the less amount of monies coming in or less funds. But yes, they're assigned, they've been received from any funds that's happened. Monies went down because, as we all know, a lot of things went down, cost of things. So less building happened and less new programs and things of that nature.
If, so do you think 2020 was a medium year for collections at $95,000? That that's where it should have been? It should have gone up from then for the COVID years?
Well, I'd like to believe it's going to, oh, I don't want to say that. That's kind of a knock on anybody who's going to get a ticket or get arrested. But the reality is people are going to be a little more active now that we don't deal with that. Now, the cost of doing business. Basically, this is being requested because our automation funds are going up and that's required by the Arizona Supreme Court. And we're just following their recommendations and/or requirements. I understand that the gentleman talking about being on a fixed income. Our budget is specific to what the AOC and/or the Supreme Court requires us to do. It's not like we build anything extra in there. I would like not to have to ask for this increase. But if I didn't ask for this increase, then I'd be asking it from the general funds. And then every taxpayer would be having to pay it in lieu of the people who are just maybe violating the law, having to pay a fine, whether it be a civil traffic fine and/or a fine associated with a criminal offense.
Would it be possible if we say it could go up, you know, the fine collection depending upon criminality we have in the county, gets back anywhere close to the $94,000 or $95,000 level? You're saying that our projected, we don't know, for '25 is going to be $100,000 or $101,000 for the expenditures up from the $70,000 that we had? Instead of going up 100% if we went up 50% and just went to $15?
Well, we don't want to have to keep coming back to the board and asking for more increases and increases. Any excess funds that could potentially be there are diverted to other court costs and alleviates the general fund money we're requesting.
I guess that's my concern. If there is, I mean, I won't be here, but the board has the time to consider raising the fees because if we go up 100% and you have money left over, we just spend it. We don't give it back to the people. But that was my only concern. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else have any questions? The judge? Nothing?
I have a comment, if I may.
Please.
Soon I will be on a strict fixed income and I'm going to do my very best not to be in the Honorable Judge's court and pay this extra fee. I promise.
Point made. Motion to approve. We have a motion? Do we have a second? I'll second it. Okay, motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Was that, was that four to one? Okay, so four to one, approved. Thank you. That was our last public hearing. We're going to the regular agenda. Item 59, Public Works, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Adoption of Board Supervisor's Resolution Number 2024-224, Accepting West Volcanic Drive from South Jade Row to South Topaz Row, the distance of approximately .37 miles into the road system for tertiary road maintenance. Okay. Mr. Lutowski?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item considers the board's approval of .37 miles extending West Volcanic Drive in bringing it into the road maintenance system as a tertiary road. Public Works worked with the applicant and is recommending acceptance.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Okay. Motion to approve. Okay, motion to approve. I'll second that. Yeah, I just didn't see. Okay. There's a motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 60, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Expenditure of $570,119.55 sourced to Herf Fund 205 for purposes of funding a construction change order for the Arizona Department of Transportation, administered and partially federally funded Mountain View Road construction project.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a question.
Okay. This is in your district, correct?
Yes. So this is due to an error from WSP?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, that is correct. That is how we see it. What had happened was when the project was in design, we had encountered, very late in the design process, a discovery of a conflict with a Bermuda water line. Staff facilitated with ADOT, of course. ADOT oversees a designer that is designing this project and the project, of course, is the .75 miles of new construction of Mountain View Road. We, in working with ADOT, highly suggested and it was performed, a utility pothole survey, as they call it. And we emphasized in this particular section, that is the subject of this change order, to identify any and all utilities. Fast forward to this year, to construction. In the midst of construction, between this Sterling to Gardner segment, the contractor discovered a conflict with the high-pressure Southwest gas line and we had to revisit the design because it simply couldn't be constructed without conflicting with Southwest gas. It was discovered that, in essence, WSP failed to perform their due diligence in identifying that gas line despite the fact that there were previous pothole surveys performed. Utility clearance was completely on them. We had been working with ADOT as well as their leadership and ADOT will, in the course of processing this change order and carrying forward with construction, also take up through their own process. And they have a very well-defined process on errors and omissions. They're going to take this up with WSP. So we're asking the board for approval of this change order. We highly recommend it. The project in this area is actually already opened up in construction. So to pause it and not continue would be, you know, on a financial state would not be recommended. But we won't know until some months in the future the outcome of the errors and omissions process. But it is possible that we could see a recovery of funds, either partial or all, of this change order amount.
So Madam Chairman, Director Lutowski, the state's going to pursue the errors and omission insurance?
Madam Chair.
Since they were the one that led the contract?
That is correctly, that is correct because they are the one that led the contract.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
We do have a motion, I believe, on a second, correct? Laura?
I only have a motion, Supervisor Johnson.
Okay. I'll second it. Okay, so now we have a motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This next one comes from Procurement. Discussion and possible action to approve an award and sign the contract for our water issues lobbyist with High Ground and provision of lobbying services on water-related issues at a monthly rate of $8,000 for an initial one-year term, commencing upon award with the county having the option to renew the contract for up to four additional one-year periods.
Good morning again. We just did agendize this as a regular agenda item, anticipating that the board would have questions. This was a board-directed item on behalf of the county manager's office. So we did go through an RFP process. We did get multiple responses. We had a very qualified evaluation committee review those responses. We're recommending award to High Ground, who is the incumbent and has held the contract since 2017. The reason for the award recommendation is not because they're the incumbent. It was that they were determined to be the most qualified, best method of approach for the price that they were offering us.
Okay, I know Mr. Ponder is here.
I have a question, Madam.
For Procurement? Okay.
Why weren't the final applicants brought before the board as they will be working for the board for the ask-and-answer question?
I appreciate that. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. This was through an RFP process. Our RFP process is well-defined in our procurement code and it is not something that comes before the board. It's through an evaluation committee as defined in Article III. I don't remember specific which section, but when it comes to the request for proposal process, we publish a request for proposals. We target people that can provide the service. I appoint a committee. That committee evaluates and makes a recommendation to the board.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yes.
Who decided that it was going to be an RFP and not a professional services contract?
So generally speaking, we use the request for qualification, which is qualifications only and then we negotiate. We usually only use that for architects, engineers. And actually, I believe this board specifically direct us to do an RFP for water lobbyist.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, for one, I would hope that all of us could agree that water should never be political. But unfortunately, water has become very political. And I'm thankful that this process was carried out and with processes that are established and that a recommendation was made based on the merits and on expertise and qualifications and not on politics because water should not be political. That's my view.
Okay, any other questions?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Everything that we do is political. It's a political body. If we have a lobbyist that our legislators from our area don't want to work with, I think that's problematic. I would have preferred that this came before the board to let the board interview and make decisions rather than it have been an RFP. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I would just make the comment that this board has the responsibility to look out for all Mojave County citizens and some of the legislation that has come out of Gail Griffin, who has not been our friend. She's listening to the Farm Bureau, which has a membership of 27,000, 28,000 members, and basically giving them everything that they want at the expense of everybody else. And what I think has happened is that the Saudi farming companies, central California companies, they've come in and they've taken over that message and they're hurting our smaller farmers. We're not against agriculture. But we don't have control over the zoning of those things. And so we have to look out for everybody that uses the water here and there is no other water supply. So I think that we have our responsibility to advocate in a balanced way and not just for corporate farms. That's all I have.
Yes, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. That's not the issue today is who's going to, the opinion of the board is that we need to fight this water war because we don't want people coming in and using up our water. We don't want our water transferred out of the county. I agree with that totally and I've supported that. What we're debating here today is who's going to represent us at the Capitol on that message. It's not a message of do we support corporate farming or not. It's a message of who's going to carry the message of the board to the legislature and the governor. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Madam Chair, I absolutely agree with those comments from Supervisor Gould. I think when it gets to the water space though with the Capitol, most of the really good firms, I mean, because you want somebody that's going to be effective, that are probably already spoken for and perhaps conflicted. So my only point was, in Mojave County's advocacy, we would work with the most qualified that is available and not conflicted. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
That was three to two. Motion carries. Item 62. This is Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Award and Signature of Contract Number 2025-016, IFB Legal Services Center Construction. Matt Smith, you have signed up to speak.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors, Madam Clerk, and congratulations to your son, by the way. We've been following his career very closely. Mr. County Manager, Mr. Chief Presiding Civil Deputy from the County Attorney's Office. I will be very brief today. I'm not sure where everybody stands on this issue right now, but the money has been allocated in the past for this. It's been sitting there for a couple of years now. Our office actually put in $1 million of our funds into this account for the building and we've also pledged another $200,000 if this goes through. This is something that is greatly needed and it's not just for my office. If anybody's been to our office, and I know a number of you have been there in the past, you would see the condition that it's in. It's very dilapidated. There are ceiling tiles that fall down from time to time, roof repairs that have needed to be done over the years. The bathrooms are horrific. And the biggest problem is a lack of space. We don't have enough space. We have offices right now where we have four people in them, another one that has three people, including an attorney in there, another office that has multiple attorneys. And that is with our efforts to house some of our attorneys in Bullhead. We have a couple down in Havasu and we have attorneys out at Magnet. And even so, we're busting at the seams right now. So we've run out of space. We need to look to the future. If you ever go to the public or legal defender's office, you would see that they're even in worse shape than our building is. And I really hope the board will look forward and see that this is something that is necessary and will take care of not only our office, but the public defender, legal defender, legal advocate's office, as well as indigent defense. And it's something that is greatly needed and I hope the board will vote for it. Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
I do have a question. Thank you, Attorney Smith. Regarding the third floor, the east side of this building, County Attorney's Office space there, are you fully occupied there? And is there any opportunity to put people there if you're overcrowded right now?
There is some space available in that office, but not a lot of space anymore. We've had risk management move into the back end of that building and there is mainly cubicles, but there aren't offices for the attorneys there. So there's a lot of cubicles and there's some space, but not enough. The other issue is, is that with the courthouse being built where it is, our people, our prosecutors, which comprises about 85% of our attorney office staff, they need to be next to the courthouse. It's more efficient. And if they were housed in the county admin building, they would be wasting time and money every day going back and forth. If you have ever been to court, you would see that things do not operate completely on time all the time. So it's not like you have hearings set at 8:30, 8:35, 8:42. Everything is set. A bunch of hearings are all set at the same time. And so if you are going to court and you're waiting for your hearing, you end up sitting over there. If you were traveling from this building to get over there, you would be spending most of your day just sitting over in court. Right now, people can just come back across the street and accomplish other tasks. So that's one of the reasons why we didn't move in, as well as the fact that it wasn't large enough into the county admin building when this building was built years ago. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Follow-up question. If this item does go through, is it possible to relinquish a portion of that east side space to the county manager so that he could possibly put some other people in there to use it?
It's possible.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Smith?
I have a question.
Okay.
Wasn't you part of the design building group on this building?
Was I part of the design? Not personally, no.
I thought you and the manager, Walker, and Timko were the... I thought you and the manager, Walker, and Timko were the architects behind them.
No.
I don't have to answer that.
No.
Okay, whatever that means. Okay, any other questions for Matt Smith?
No questions, but at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Supervisor Gould.
I have no questions for Attorney Smith, but I would like to discuss a couple of things.
Okay.
We heard from the budget director, we have a structural deficit. What the majority approved back in August was $12,441,990. What you're looking at today is $13,474. And then with the additional four cost overruns, puts you up above $14 million. So I believe that that roughly million and a half dollars is going to add to the structural deficit. I'm sure the finance director can enlighten us on whether or not that's true.
Good morning, Chairman Angus, Supervisor Gould. So you're correct in the budgeted numbers, what the board approved for FY25 budget. And before I answer your question, I just want to just give you a very quick rundown of what that budgeted amount was comprised of, because it has been funds that have flowed in over a number of years. Going back to FY21, the first general fund allocation was 1.95 million. FY22 saw, as County Attorney Smith mentioned, a $1 million transfer of state RICO funds from the County Attorney's Office. There was also in that year, a sweep from the landfill fund of $850,000. There was a $200,000 sweep from ERACE. In FY23, we also saw some spend on the design for the building, about 3/4 of a million for design and some other expenses. Sorry, FY22 also had a $5 million general fund allocation. And then FY23, another $1.5 million allocated from the general fund. And in the current year's budget, an additional $3 million. You'll recall that we, last year, had increased the contingency for the general fund by approximately $6 million, anticipating that the Phase II of the courthouse remodel and the legal services center would require additional funding. And so that brings us to today. And to your question Supervisor Gould, will this increase the recurring structural deficit? It will not increase the recurring structural deficit. This is not a recurring expense. As County Attorney Smith mentioned, the County Attorney's Office has pledged an additional $200,000 in state RICO funds to cover some of that over budget. We also have, from the Phase II of the Law and Justice Courthouse remodel, that project came in significantly under budget. There's about $2.66 million in savings versus budget. And so what this proposal earmarks is utilizing approximately 1.72 million from that 2.66 in savings on the courthouse to cover the funding gap. And so on a recurring basis, no, this will not increase the recurring structural deficit.
Madam Chairman, Director Morton, and I didn't say reoccurring. I said structural deficit.
So...
Which would be the revenue versus the expenditures.
Supervisor Gould, yes.
Since we don't build these things every year, then it wouldn't be a reoccurring expense.
Correct. And so when we look at our five-year outlook for the budget, what we had, what I presented to you, to the board back in June, was that we do have a... The bulk of the structural deficit is on the recurring side of things. And so our recurring revenues are outpaced by our recurring expenses. A much smaller piece of it is a non-recurring deficit. Looking at the next five years, the non-recurring portion of that deficit is the repayment of the $10 million loan that the general fund, that the county took from the landfill fund to pay down the PSPRS unfunded pension obligation. And so that's the only non-recurring piece of that deficit. As we did to balance the FY25 budget, we drew down on the general fund balance. And so approval of this project will not change the five-year outlook as far as it relates to the next year. We had projected a total deficit of $9.3 million. That would either be made up if there are increases in revenue, or if there are decreases in expenses. But whatever is left of that structural deficit would come out of the general fund balance.
So if you spend an additional $1 million that wasn't budgeted for, how could it not increase the deficit?
Supervisor Gould, what I am saying is that we came in 2.66 million under budget on the courthouse remodel. So we had budgeted funds. We came in 2.66 million under that. We're allocating a piece of that, 1.7, to this project. It still leaves us $1 million under budget, and so it's not increasing the structural deficit.
See, I would argue that that courthouse did not come in under budget, because I don't believe that the... If you look at the original motion for the courthouse, it was extremely less than what they ended up spending on the courthouse.
Supervisor Gould, I am going off of the budget that the board approved for FY25 when I speak to the fact that it's under budget.
At some day, we're going to have to pay back the... Probably don't have to pay back the $200,000 from ERACE, but we've probably got to pay back the $850,000 to the landfill closure fund, I believe is what that money is worth is for.
Supervisor Gould, that was a sweep. It was not a loan. It does not need to be paid back.
Someday, we will have to close the landfill. When that someday comes, we will have to have the money to do it. If the money is not there, we will have to find the money.
You're correct Supervisor Gould, and the...
Doing simpleton math here, so bear with me.
We do budget for those closure and post-closure costs. Every year, the county has a, not an audit, but an agreed-upon procedure where we have an auditing firm come and look at what those estimated closure and post-closure costs are compared to what the fund balance is. And there's a minimum recommended amount that we carry in anticipation of that eventual closure. And we are where we need to be as far as those metrics are concerned.
The money that went to the PSPRS out of the landfill closure fund, does that need to be repaid?
That went to PSPRS, yes, that does need to be repaid. This year is the first year, it's a 10-year repayment plan, and FY25 is the first year of repayment.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may really quick.
Right ahead.
Two additional points. With the completion of this building, if the board approves it, the six different departments will move into it. It will make three county, current county buildings available. We intend to, when that time comes, to come to the board, ask for authorization to sell those buildings. They do have value, and we will anticipate that those sales coming into the general fund. The other point that I'd like to share with the board or remind you of is these buildings that the county attorney spoke of are truly old and dilapidated, and they need quite a bit of work to maintain. And there is cost-saving in housing these departments, these six departments, and a new building versus this old building. There is truly a cost-saving annually in maintaining a newer building versus the buildings that they're in, on a cost per square footage.
Madam Chairman. County Manager Elters, can you give the public a rundown on what the scope of this project is, so that they know what we're talking about?
Sure. Madam Chair and Supervisor Gould, thank you. This project consists of building a two-story building where the old jail that has been demoed or demolished as a result of being condemned and the board programmed funds for us to carry that task on. So the site is immediately behind the courthouse, the new and the historic courthouse. It is a two-story building that consists of just under 39,000 square feet. It will house six county departments, consisting of the county attorney's office, primarily the prosecution side, legal defender, public defender, legal advocate, indigent services, and victim witness. Two of those buildings that have people in them now, the legal defender and the victim witness, will be demoed for parking to accommodate the new building and the parking space required for it. And those buildings being demoed is part of the strategy. The legal defender building has been flooded multiple times over the years, and it's a no loss or no waste to demo that building and turn it into a parking lot. I hope I answered your questions, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, yes Supervisor Lincolnfelter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Follow-up question for Manager Elters. I know that when the county built the jail, and this was done as an invitation for bid, that that project came out significantly higher than what we ended up paying. And there was a two-day period of value engineering. My question to you is, was there a clause in the contract that allows for value engineering on this project to go through all the systems and perhaps identify some cost savings to bring it more in line with what the board originally approved, either before the contract? Or is there a clause in the contract that will allow the contractor to bring cost-saving proposals to the board, a value engineering? And I know that you have construction experience with Matrix and other places. You know value engineering clauses where a contractor can bring to the owner opportunities for cost savings during a contract, and they independently and jointly review those. And is there that opportunity with this contract?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Lincolnfelter, thank you. There is no specific provision in the contract requiring or allowing for value engineering. And I'll tell you, we brought it in, design cost was less than what it would have cost because we relied on the framework. The building itself resembles the building that we built for Public Works out on, off of Andy Devine. So we were able to optimize the design cost by using that building frame and lowering the designing cost. To that end, though, Madam Chair and Supervisor Lincolnfelter, we will always seek and welcome any value engineering opportunities. They honestly, as you know, do not have to be spelled out. We will seek any opportunity where we give value engineer to reduce the cost. We started, just for your information, we have trimmed along the way to bring the cost to where it is. The cost of furniture for this building, for the sixth department, initially was projected to be higher, and we said, no, we need to reduce it. And we reduced it to about a third of what it was anticipated. We expect people to carry furniture with them to the extent that it has life cycle and so on. So we will, to specifically answer your question, Supervisor Lincolnfelter, we will look for and welcome any value engineering opportunities on this project.
The contractor recommended, if they're awarded, they'll be able to send, to bring those to you. And I just bring that up because private sector contractors, they build these things all the time, and they see things that designers sometimes don't. And so to be able to have that opportunity to bring cost savings opportunities without undermining the performance of the facility, I mean, that helps everybody.
Madam Chair and Supervisor Lincolnfelter, absolutely, we will look for that. One last note, the contractor that we're recommending award to was the contractor that built the Public Works building, which went really well. It was successful. Very little of the contingency funds were utilized on that project. It's the same contractor that received award for the Reach Out facility as well, and they're off to a great start. So we anticipate similar progress here. The money that is set aside for contingency, if not needed, it will not be spent. And furthermore, we will be vigilant and look for any value engineering opportunities that may be there.
Thank you, Manager Elters. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
One more question. Tara, was this a planned and spec job, or is this a negotiated job?
Thank you, Chairman and Supervisor Gould. I was going to actually speak to that. The value engineering tends to be when you do alternative project delivery methods, which would be the design build, construction manager at risk, or does design build, finance, maintain. There's various variations. No, this was a traditional design bid build. And part of that was to County Manager Elters' point, because the building itself has been designed multiple times. Mojave County's actually built it twice. Development Services and Public Works are this sort of footprint. And then I believe that there's two versions of this in Havasu-Bullhead as well. And so there is some savings related to just kind of making the tweaks to the inside of the building. So we elected to use the direct select method for contracting to get a, not great wording, but like a budget design. And then because we went through that process, it went through a traditional bid process. I would also like to add that the project actually came in under the engineer's estimate. It's just over what we had budgeted. And we had very strong bids. There was only a deviation of 6% between the high bid and the low bid, and we got four very strong bids on this project. So I'm, just from an analysis standpoint, I'm confident that it was a strong bid. I'm confident that we got a fair price. And my concern would be if we don't do anything... We had this discussion 12 years ago with the Public Works building. The do-nothing option just means it will be more expensive later. There was an opportunity back in 2012 to make renovations to the Hardy Building and try and keep that structure working for Mojave County's needs a little bit longer. Ultimately, the board elected that it made more sense to put the money in now, get them in a building that would last 30-plus years. I see this not exactly the same, but very similar. If we do not move forward with this project, we will have to do some renovations to the old DES building and to existing structures just to make them workable, and we'd still eventually need to build something for them. Maybe not this building exactly, but it will need to happen in the future.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson.
Can you tell me what the original cost was for the court complex when it was first brought to the board and what we budgeted?
Even if I knew the number, I probably wouldn't be able to tell you off my head. I was actually not here when that one was awarded. I think it was somewhere in the mid-$20 million range.
And we're at what now, without even completing it?
We're talking about two different contracts, but I don't remember what the overall award for the new build is. We're at about eight point something for Phase II-A, which is what you guys awarded at the last board meeting for the Law and Justice Center.
And we still have another phase to go?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's what I think bothers me when we keep saying we're safe $2.5 million. We're not done. We haven't even got close to being finished, and we're way over what we originally came out with, just like the animal shelter. Thank you, Madam.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Tara. I think way back, we did have a motion. Did we have a second? No? Okay, so we do have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, three to two. Motion carries. Item 63. This is, sitting as the Board of the Mojave County Flood Control District, receive an update regarding the U.S. Geological Survey of the Walupi Basin Groundwater Monitoring Intergovernmental Agreement.
Good morning. I think you guys are going to get sick of hearing from me today. Again, we agendized this one as a regular agenda item. We do have Jamie from USGS here available to give an update to the board. And so I've agendized it in this way. Normally, we would have just put it on the consent agenda to use a cooperative contract. We'd be looking at using the City of Tucson's cooperative contract... We'd be looking at using the City of Tucson's cooperative contract for well drilling and one of our awarded contracts on call for the design of the well drilling. USGS can definitely do a better job of describing the project than I could. The only thing that I would add is Scott had actually brought it to my attention. My math is wrong, and the total project budget on this should actually be 894,952. I just didn't add well. That's why I'm in procurement and not finance. So the individual proposals, the 230,230 for the design component and the 664,722 for the well drilling adds up to 30,000? Yes, 30,000 more than what I had put in there. But this, I'll either hand it over to Scott or Jamie, and they can give you an update on the project itself.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If we could hear from Jamie?
Yeah, Jamie?
Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors, it's good to see many of you again. It's been many years. I've presented to you many times. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jamie Macy. I'm the Associate Director for United States Geological Survey, Arizona Water Science Center. I'm also a hydrologist and geologist by training. We work on water issues at the USGS all across Arizona. It was good earlier to hear in the meeting, talking with the Arizona Department of Water Resources and the folks that you're all working with for the supply and demand. We're supporting a lot of the information for the supply and demand across the state. I do have some slides to show you today, and I'm hoping that they will, there they are, they're going to pop up on the screen here, talking about the hydrologic monitoring and modeling project that we've been working with you all here at Mojave County on for a number of years. We started back in 2007, Arizona Department of Water Resources and the Rural Watershed Initiatives, looking at water resources in rural areas. We then in 2017 created a groundwater model by which we projected water use in the Walupi Basin to look at how much water could sustain over the years. And there are the slides. Hopefully, you all can see these slides. So as I said, we work with partners all across Arizona on water issues, and I want to make sure you understand too that this is a close collaborative effort between ourselves at the USGS, Mojave County, and the City of Kingman. So as all of you know, we got involved in this project many years ago. In 2017, there were concerns about expanding groundwater withdrawals in Walupi Basin that could affect the City of Kingman's water source. And so we were brought in as the USGS to assess the impacts of additional groundwater withdrawals and enhanced recharge in Walupi Basin. So we created a groundwater model, as I said, around 2018, 2019, and we've been monitoring the aquifer ever since. And today, I'm going to talk a bit more about that monitoring effort. Our groundwater monitoring started back in around 2017 with four groundwater monitoring wells that we're using in the basin based off an initial assessment from the groundwater model. What we learned quickly from those sites is we needed to move them down into the Kingman Sub Basin. For those of you who have heard my talks before, we've talked about the Kingman Sub Basin where the water source of the City of Kingman is from, and the Walupi Sub Basin to the north, where much of the agriculture is going on. So we had these four groundwater monitoring wells, and we realized that we needed to move them further south, and we quickly had, a couple of them were vandalized, unfortunately. But that's common at the USGS in a lot of rural areas. When we have our water monitoring equipment out there, they're nice targets for folks. A lot of times, the solar panels or other equipment can be targets for people to shoot at, or unfortunately, things just get vandalized. But that's normal here at the USGS. So I wasn't too concerned about it. But we needed some groundwater monitoring sites, and we worked with folks at both the City of Kingman and Mojave County to try and find sites that would be most accessible and usable for the City of Kingman to monitor those groundwater resources into the future. Unfortunately, we have not found those sites. And so we worked with the Mojave staff, and it was suggested to us at USGS that Mojave County drill some wells that would be long-term monitoring locations. And that's what's being proposed today, is for the county to drill wells in the Kingman Sub Basin that'll be long-term monitoring locations. So as we look at some of the water use in the basin, in 2021, the areas around the basin that were using water all the way from small amounts of acre-feet all the way up to thousands of acre-feet per year. And this is data from our water use team in the Arizona Water Science Center to look at water use around the basin. In 2022, that water use has expanded a little bit in certain areas, and especially up towards the Long Mountain area, which for those of you also who have heard my talks, there is a bedrock high in the area of Long Mountain that separates the Walupi Sub Basin from the Kingman Sub Basin and a very important area to monitor water. In 2023, we saw little change from 2022, but still some changes. But what's important is the potential to into the future. And now we have an INA designated for the Walupi Sub Basin, very important towards helping to manage those water resources, but the potential of other wells that are grandfathered into the area and water use that may occur over the next 50 to 100 years. In the Walupi Basin currently, Arizona Department of Water Resources has a number of index wells, those dots in red that are on the map. Those index wells are measured once a year if Department of Water Resources has the funds and the availability to measure the wells. But what we are proposing at the USGS, in collaboration with Mojave County, are a series of three groundwater monitoring wells, the wells labeled in green, that would really help to help protect the aquifer system. I'm going to show you a series of projections here of groundwater use in Walupi Basin based on especially pumping from the City of Kingman. You're going to see a series of white circles. Those circles are hypothetical groundwater depletions in the aquifer, and that happens when you have groundwater pumping, cones of depression around the wells that are pumping. The wells that we selected in Walupi Basin, the green circles, were strategically put there on land that is owned by the City of Kingman and Mojave County to be used to be able to monitor the aquifer as groundwater withdrawals increase. Those wells will be located in strategic areas to help to notify all of you as water managers when the aquifer could be in critical situation or dire situation. These wells are also strategically placed to help the groundwater model that was produced to provide additional information to continually constrain that uncertainty that I've often talked about. That can be shown in groundwater models when we're trying to project water for 50 to 100 So the three monitoring locations that have been proposed, again, Mojave County proposing the land and the areas, working with us at USGS to strategically find locations to help support and protect the Kingman water supply. These are long-term monitoring locations. We expect them to last at least 50 years. We use the groundwater model to project out at least 50 years from now to look at where the water levels would be and work with Mojave County to construct the wells so that they would be able to monitor the water for at least 50 years, probably much longer. Again, the sites are strategically located, as I showed you, with those groundwater withdrawals and the cones of depression in the aquifer, so that they will notify you when the aquifer is going through critical damages. The data will be publicly available for everyone to see hourly, and we will work with Mojave County to post that data to your website hourly. It may not sound like fun, but it's often neat to hit the internet and look at what's happening with your groundwater supplies. You can look at an hourly basis. We at the USGS have already purchased all the monitoring equipment, and this is important because the USGS is doing the monitoring side of things. We're not doing the drilling ourselves. The funds that are being proposed here are for a contractor, a private consultant, and a drilling company to drill the wells. But we at the USGS have already purchased the equipment and have a pre-existing contract and agreement with Mojave County to continue to do this monitoring through the end of this fiscal year. As I said, the data will be publicly available to everyone, and a neat thing about that is you can see those recharge events. You have a number of artificial recharge basins across Mojave County, and you can see in a 15-minute interval on these wells if there's recharge coming into the aquifer system and if the aquifer is seeing any kind of recharge. In addition to all of this, these sites will be fortified against vandalism. We've worked with Mojave County to place fencing around the sites and also for USGS for us to provide structures that will house all of the monitoring equipment so they will be fortified from any type of vandalism. And as a part of our contract, as part of your contract with us at USGS, if any of the equipment is vandalized, we replace that equipment for free. That's just a part of the agreement we have. We replace all of the equipment as we go. It's just a part of our maintenance and operation on these wells. I thank you for your time. I'm here for questions. But again, this is a collaborative effort between Mojave County, the City of Kingman, and the USGS to help to protect the aquifer system in Walupi Valley.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Sir, you spoke of the wells that the state monitors in that area. Did you know when the last time the state monitored the wells in that area was?
I believe it was last summer was the last measurement that was taken.
Okay. I know they monitor, I have two private wells. They were out last year. They'd been out 10 years before that. They're not in that area, they're in a different area. But they had monitored those two wells. So they must, you know when they monitored the wells before the last time that they monitored them was?
I don't know the exact dates, and they rotate through the number of wells and which wells they can monitor based on the funding and personnel they have available to measure the wells. I know ADWR tries to monitor, and Walupi Basin is a very important basin for the state. And I know they try and monitor as frequently as possible, but at most, it's once a year. Sometimes they have to skip years depending on funding.
Is there going to be enough movement in the aquifer to justify monitoring it every 15 minutes?
The monitoring every 15 minutes and transmitting every hourly is a bit much for groundwater, especially in a slow-moving system like this, but at least a daily stamp is a good signature to have. The difference between once a year and multiple times during the year, like hourly, for instance, is looking at the seasonal trends, looking at the recharge events that are coming in from the mountains, and looking at how quickly during pumping in the summer that the aquifer is depleting. That information can be fed into the groundwater model that we've created and can be used to help to project into the future the long-term resources in Walupi Valley.
Does the state own the wells that they monitor in that area?
I'm not sure on that.
Private wells?
I don't know if they own the wells or if they're private wells that they've attached to. I don't know.
And you can't put the monitoring equipment that you're proposing on those wells?
We cannot. The state has those wells.
You can't do an intergovernmental agreement with the state to monitor the wells?
No, we've not been able to work with ADWR to be able to monitor their index wells or include our instrumentation on their index wells.
Interesting. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else? Supervisor Leon Felder?
No questions, but I would make a motion to approve and thank USGS and City of Kingman for their continued partnership with Mojave County.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But we're in the middle of a...
Last time, too.
No, I didn't. I called you up. We were in the middle of a vote, though.
Can we clarify that that's with the revised total?
Excuse me?
Can we clarify that that motion is with the revised total, project total?
894,000.
Yes, thank you.
852.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, I believe that was four to one. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Jones.
I'm sorry, too.
Okay. Next up?
Madam Chairman?
Yes. Want to take a break?
No, I just wanted to point out that during the regular agenda, we don't have to call the public up to speak.
I understand.
It's nice that we do, but it's not required.
We've always tried to do it. Sometimes we make mistakes.
Sure. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Let's see, item 64, discussion and possible action to approve the creation of Personnel Policies and Procedures, Section 1.3, zero out-of-state work. Leon?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. This item was brought by Director Dornar and CFO Mornian. This is to create a new policy defining the process for out-of-state worker approval due to the financial implications of the worker compensation coverage. So with that, this would be a new process that would require risk, finance, and county manager approval of an out-of-state hire. Currently, those in place would be grandfathered in unless they determine that they wanted to move, and then they would go through this process. And if there's questions, I'm happy to try and answer. Past that, I do believe most of the parties are here.
Okay, any questions? Anyone? Okay, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one also, Ms. Lewis, discussion and possible action to approve changes to Personnel Policies and Procedures, Section 2.7, Worker's Compensation Policy.
Good morning again. This one was brought up by the Risk Department, and this is to clarify the language with regards to the return-to-work paperwork for our worker compensation employees. This is to ensure that we're receiving proper releases with our current work statuses.
Any questions? Any questions?
Motion to approve again.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is from our Treasurer. Item 66, discussion and possible action to approve staff to proceed with the statutory steps outlined in ARS 11-2519 to sell excess county-owned parcels. The Treasurer's Office will provide updates to the Board on parcels sold.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, start on this. Earlier this year, Board of Supervisors directed staff to inventory county-owned property. That task was completed and produced a list of over 330 parcels. Multiple departments, including the Assessor's Office, the Treasurer, Public Works, and Development Services, among others, collaborated to review all these, the list of 330 parcels, and identify those that have county buildings, county improvements, that are in the floodway that can't and should not be disposed of. And that practice, that effort, which I'm grateful to all of those, especially the County Assessor's Office Recorder and Treasurer for putting the time into it, we were able to bring the list down or reduce it to 171 parcels that consist of larger and very valuable or very small, and some of them are sliver's parcels. So with the anticipation that the Board would like to dispose of these parcels and put them back in private hands, we took the time to develop a program to present to you today that would walk you through how that would take place and ask you for approval. The Treasurer and her team were kind enough and gracious enough, they volunteered to take the lead on that. The program was developed with the county attorney's office input, and they will be presenting it to you, asking you for approval to proceed if you approve of it. So with that said, Treasurer Malo, please go ahead.
Good morning, Chairwoman and Supervisors. You did a great job, Manager Elters. Yeah, we did volunteer to take this project on, and we're looking forward to it. We're going to take the unnecessary parcels that the county isn't able to use, you know, have an auction, get them back on the tax roll, potentially have some improvements on those properties, get to have higher taxes. So my special projects manager, Paul Gentry, is taking this project on, and he's going to answer any questions that you might have. Okay, any questions for the Treasurer?
Maybe just an overview, a brief overview.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, so we looked at statute, what the requirements would be to sell these parcels. So the kind of brief overview would be that, one, we'd have to select the parcels. We provided a list, inventory of parcels that could be sold. Two would be an appraisal to establish the market value would be required. Three would be provide at least 30 days' notice before the sale, and then four would be sell at public auction to the highest bidder. We have explored some different kind of opportunities that the county could do with this. One being with the appraisals. There are some properties on this list that have considerably higher value than a lot of the other parcels on the list. Those parcels that have the kind of significantly higher values, what we would look to do would wait to receive the appraisals on those parcels until interest is provided to the county. Once interest is provided to the county by an interested buyer, the county would then receive a deposit from the interested buyer that would then allow the county to proceed with getting the appraisal required on the property. So it'd be a little bit different with the higher-value parcels. With the lower-value parcels, we're hoping that we could, through procurement, be able to obtain kind of lower-cost appraisals for those. And with those parcels, what we would ideally be looking to do with the... And with those parcels, what we would ideally be looking to do with the auction would be to then sell those parcels at auction, just like we do with a tax deed sale, where for the lower-value properties, that we could take them to public auction through the website and sell them that way. But with the higher-value properties, we would look to list those parcels on the county website, and then once interest is brought to the county, then we would move forward with the appraisal and then auction. And with the auction with those, what we've been exploring would be having the auction maybe before, during, or after Board of Supervisors meeting.
Very good. I'd like to thank Treasurer Mello and Assistant Kenzie, everybody that was involved with this. Follow-up question to Manager Elters, I was the supervisor that initially put this on way back when, and I'm thankful that our board supported the proceeds that are received from this, or they be deposited and be put towards offsetting the structural budget deficit.
Madam Chair and Supervisor Lincolnfeldter, if approved by the board, we will go through the program that we just presented. When the funds come in, we will report them to the board and place them in the general fund unless directed otherwise.
Thank you, Manager.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I just wanted to remind the board that I was provided a list of properties for potential sale by Jeff Esposito, a public citizen, spent a bunch of time working up that list also, so I might want to compare Jeff's list to the list that the counties come up with. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Supervisor Johnson, nothing?
Another Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve.
I need a second, second. I have a motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are up now to item sixty-seven. This is discussion of possible action to approve the sale of point-two-two acres of vacant land adjacent to the Fort Mojave Fire District Station located at 2230 Joy Lane in Fort Mojave at the sale price of thirty-six thousand in accordance with ARS 11-251. Mr. Clark from the Fort Mojave Fire District, Fire Department?
Good morning, Chairman Angus and the board. As you know, the fire district was granted two-point-two-three million dollars for the renovation of Fire Station Ninety-One. This is an integral part of that. The station is on a pretty small lot, we've worked around to get the septic installed, that's happening this week since project's moving forward. The bid for this project went out on November the fourth, it's due back the twenty-fifth, and action by our board on the third, hopefully to award it. That's in line with the requirement of having the contractor in place by December thirty-first, so this is vital to us. The property hasn't been used for years, it's the county park's equipment on it, there was a portion of Flood District was willing to transfer to the district. Through that process, was determined that we had to get a appraisal for it, and that appraisal was forty thousand dollars, so that's where we arrived at thirty-six thousand dollars. Again, we need to move this forward, if we don't, it's going to affect potentially releasing that contract for the bid.
Second.
I have a motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item sixty-eight, and this is brought to us from Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to have a gentleman come up and explain it to you.
Do you want to start with the people who are signed up?
That's good. Not now.
Okay, well, how much, who's going to give Mr. Spar their time? One, two, three?
In the interest of time, last week I handed out one of these to all of you.
Right.
If you all have received it.
Well, excuse me, we'll give you ten minutes. Yeah.
So I'm not going to repeat what's in here, I'm going to look at this from a practical All the people on this list need this ordinance. The county attorney really has a tough job, and he's trying to do the best he can, but there's no local rules regarding how the grand jury is to function. The Arizona Supreme Court gave us the grand jury. There's a law that says that any county that has a quarter-million people is required to have a grand jury. But when they issue, when they send us down with the grand jury, they left the window open for us to make our own local laws to fit our county. It would be inappropriate for the legislature to try and pick every county, and they're going to have one blanket rule for all counties, they can't do that. They, um, I think you're aware of all the animosity that's been going back and forth between the county attorney and I, and I'm really, I really don't like that. But I was, I was in a box, I had to do something. He had to do something. He implemented what he thought was right, and I implemented what I thought was right. And I think we're both honorable people, but we need for you to establish the rules of procedure. And the county sheriff, you know, the same thing, county sheriff, one of his deputies said he's going to arrest me for going to the grand jury, knowing full well that you cannot intimidate somebody to go to a grand jury, that's a crime in Arizona. But these things are going on, and everybody still, you know, the county sheriff, they're trying to do their job, and I'm trying to do my job. My day job is national security, and to me, how every county function is a national security issue. The Kingman, I don't know how the Kingman Police got involved in this, but they told me that they were filing charges against me for trespassing. Well, that was five months ago, and I have been trying to get a copy of this, and they won't send it to me. I think they discovered that the county, they don't have a trespassing law. So everybody's kind of jumping, and we're all bumping heads against each other. And what it really come down to is, I think that you folks need to establish the local rules of procedure for the grand jury. It's just, it's never been done. Many years ago, a judge invited me to come in to sit down with him and talk in his chambers, and he said, "Mr. Spar, what do you want to get out of this?" He says, "You're up against a billion-dollar company." He says, "I understand they stole your invention, and they're invaded, they violated your patent rights, but they have so many attorneys, they're going to keep you in court for years." And I said, and he said, "What do you really want out of this?" I said, "Justice." He says, "Mr. Spar, you don't understand the current system, justice is whatever you can get away from the courtroom nowadays." Well, that's wrong, that's not what our founding fathers had in mind. My goodness. The grand jury is the answer for all of these. The grand jury reports, and the grand jury basically is owned by the people, the grand jury is not subordinate to the county attorney, not subordinate to the, they're not subordinate to anybody. And the grand jury is the only authority that the people have. The, you know, and I could tell you some stories about people that have been harmed because of, you know, but I don't want to go into all kinds of detail, because I'm in a lot of pain today, so I need to get out of here pretty soon. But, you know, Ms. Bishop, you have an extensive experience in law enforcement, and I'd like to know if you have any ideas how to maybe change the, or submit, you know, amendments to the proposed ordinance that I wrote. Because I, you know, I don't know if it's perfect, I like to get an opinion from the county attorney also. I mean, we all need to work together on this, and not just keep yelling at each other and bumping our heads and all that. So that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you very much, sir. I said, I thanked you, thank you very much for your testimony. Does anybody want to ask Mr. Spar any questions?
Madam Chairman. Mr. Spar, how would you envision this operating?
What'd you say?
How would you envision this operating?
I'm sorry, I can't understand what you're saying. My military experience killed my hearing.
Maybe my tone would be, how would you envision this operating, working?
How would?
You envision this system operating? How do you see it?
My vision?
Yes.
This is what would happen. It would be a miracle, it would be wonderful. No longer attorneys would be allowed to go into courtroom and lie. And sometimes judges lie. The judges wouldn't be lying anymore, because they would all know that they could be indicted, and that would stop all this nonsense, all this, attorneys get involved and they, in fact, I know some people that wound up having a million dollars in attorney's fees because their attorney kept telling them, "Oh, we're going to, we're going to win this case." And, you know, frivolous arguments should not be condoned. And I think frivolous arguments would be stopped if they, all they have to do is know that they could be indicted by a grand jury. Right now, nobody knows that, nobody believes it, nobody ever heard of it. This, a hundred years ago was when this, when the people started losing access to the grand jury. And it become, before that, before that, the citizen could go to the grand jury, and that citizen could become, would represent the county prosecution office, and they would prosecute the case themselves. Well, that's not practical anymore, I don't think, you know, we need to be doing that. But this is, I have been litigating for almost forty years across this country, from west coast to east coast, I've been up to the United States Supreme Court before. In fact, the last time I went to the Supreme Court, I was joined by four university law schools and four scientific societies, because the government was doing things that were damaging the scientific base in this country. And so I have a lot of experience in that. But what I want is, I want our constitutional values, that's what I want. So if you, if you could put this, you know, on your next meeting, on your agenda for a vote, that would be wonderful. And if, and if any of you would like, because I have this hearing problem, I'd like to come and sit down and talk to you, because I don't, I lose an awful lot of what, you know, the converse is going on.
Understood.
So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you too, Mr. Spar.
And Buster, I appreciate you putting this on the agenda, thank you very much.
Okay. So next up, we have Matt Smith, our county attorney, and then Steve Moss, our presiding
Okay, county attorney.
Thank you. Mr. Spar is a, I believe, a resident of Lake Havasu City, and I believe him to be a good man and an intelligent man, but I think in this instance, he's misguided. First of all, any fix that would have to come would have to be a state legislative fix. The grand jury is created by state statute, and the rules governing the grand jury, how they're summoned, how they're picked, how they're impaneled, how they function, what happens at the grand jury, is all codified, and all the rules are there, and they're easy to follow. In addition, the Arizona Supreme Court has promulgated rules of criminal procedure that govern, among other things, how the grand jury is to be done. The grand jury is convened and impaneled by the presiding Superior Court Judge, or the presiding criminal Superior Court Judge. Right now, Judge Carlisle is handling that. Under ARS Section 21-407, duties of the grand jurors, the grand jurors shall inquire into every offense which may be tried within the county, which is presented to them by the county attorney or other prosecuting officer at the request of the county attorney, or by the Attorney General as a special prosecutor when appointed by the presiding judge of the Superior Court. Case law, Burger versus, State Exrel Burger versus Myers, it's an Arizona Supreme Court case from nineteen-seventy-two, dictates that the grand jury must inquire into every offense presented to it by the county attorney. There are all kinds of rules in case law on the duties of the prosecutor to present evidence in a fair and impartial way. Case law has come down over the years, which has made it more and more incumbent upon the prosecutors to give a fair presentation. Some of the examples are that if you do not present clearly exculpatory evidence, that is evidence that would go to the benefit of the suspect, then the case can be remanded by the judge in the Superior Court, who acts as a referee over this process. The point I'm getting at and going through all of this is the amount of checks and balances that are already in the system. If you have evidence that is not clearly exculpatory, it doesn't have to be presented. So an example would be, if you had a bank robbery, and there were two bank tellers that saw the bank robbery happen, one of them has a clean prior record, and the other one has a prior felony conviction, that's not something that you have to present to the grand jury, that somebody who's doing their job as a bank teller had a prior felony conviction. Now, that would be admissible at the trial, if it went to trial, but it's not something that's clearly exculpatory, particularly if there are multiple witnesses and other evidence that link the suspect to the crime.
I'll give you a few more minutes.
Thank you. Another safeguard is what's called a tribus letter, and that is a letter that defense counsel representing somebody presents to the county attorney's office, outlining what they think is exculpatory evidence that needs to be presented. If we don't present that evidence, we're doing so at our own peril. Finally, the defendant himself has a right to testify, and that is something they let us know about through their attorney, and then we present that and must present that to the grand jury, and then the grand jury, who does have the power here, and that is of the people, that's the thing that's being overlooked here, the grand jury is the people, they then get to decide whether or not they want to hear from the defendant, they vote on that separately. For you, those of you that don't know how the grand jury works, there are sixteen members that are selected every time, and they serve for three months, so they have to do it for three months, they have to give up sometimes their job, at least on Thursdays, they meet every Thursday for three months, and they generally are there from about nine o'clock in the morning till four o'clock in the afternoon. They hear approximately twenty cases every Thursday. Those cases are picked by our office, we decide which cases are going to go there. Who's present? I'm sorry, question? Oh, I'm sorry. Who's present during that, during the presentation of evidence? Under the rules that are promulgated by the Supreme Court, you have the court reporter, the witness. If the witness is the defendant, in those rare instances, his attorney gets to be there. If an interpreter's needed, they're there, the county attorney, or one of the prosecuting attorneys, and the grand jury themselves. They're secret proceedings, no one else is allowed to be there, no media, no other people to be there for it. And that is for the privacy, and that is for particularly people that maybe do not get indicted, because you don't want that evidence disseminated. Under Mr. Spar's ordinance, that privacy would be gone. It would be something that there would be people that do not have an ethical duty to the court and to the system, which would be the people in my office. Other people, if they were allowed to present cases, they could do whatever they wanted, it would be a free-for-all. If the county attorney himself, or one of the... If the county attorney himself, or one of the prosecutors, is suspected of a crime, what's the avenue then? That's something that's in the materials that Mr. Spar presented. The answer is the Arizona Attorney General. You don't think that happens? It just happened in Apache County. The Attorney General of the state actually serves search warrants on the Apache County attorney at his home and at his office, and he is going to be prosecuted most likely for what's going on right now. So, that is the oversight over our office. If our office sees that there's a conflict of interest, we send cases to other counties. Generally, we trade conflicts with Coconino County and Yabapai County because they're fairly close, and because they're similarly situated counties with about the same amount of population. So, if they have problems, like law enforcement officers get in trouble, they send it to us. If we have law enforcement officers here, most of the time, we send it to Coconino or Yabapai, to avoid the impropriety that could appear. Grand jury is dealing with criminal matters only. Prosecutors are the ones that prosecute crimes here. The people that work in our office have law degrees, have passed the bar exam, they continue to undergo training, and they swear an oath to defend the Constitution. Most importantly, what's all part of this process is you need to have somebody that's objective and unbiased, that is looking at these cases, and that is the people in our office. We don't have a personal stake. When Mr. Spar sent his materials to our office for review, I took a look at it myself. I made a decision that what he was alleging was not something that was a crime, and, more importantly, that there would be no reasonable likelihood of conviction. What happened in his case, I don't remember all the details now, I know he could talk about it, but he had an action pending in Lake Havasu City. He had his day in court. It did not go his way. He was unhappy about it. And then he sent me some materials, and he alleged that there were private attorneys that were lying. He talked about lying attorneys today. There were private bar attorneys that lied, that the city attorney's office was corrupt, that law enforcement was corrupt, and that everybody basically was corrupt. And so, when we decided we were not going to pursue this, he sent me a letter, a memo, that said, "I'm gonna show up at grand jury." He didn't have an ordinance or anything else at that time. He just said, "I'm gonna show up." One of our investigators was there that day, and they told him that he had to leave or he's going to be trespassed. The next thing you know, he came up to Kingman and asked to meet with me, and he was in the lobby, and I met with him, and at that time, he told me that he had a warrant for my arrest. He was gonna do a citizen's arrest. Now, think about that. You know, let's say, even if I did do something wrong, there was no investigation, there was no due process, there was no law enforcement looking at this thing, it was just his determination that he had been wronged by me because he was not allowed to present his case to the grand jury that day. Now, you can presume that maybe I was the one that asked our investigator to be there in case he showed up, but he didn't know that for sure. They could have showed up on their own, it could have been someone else in my office that had them there, but he wanted to arrest me. And when I told him that I was not gonna go with him to the jail, the next thing, I get a call from our sheriff, Doug Schuster, who said, "Well, I guess I have to come over and arrest you today." Because he went over there, and he wanted the sheriff to arrest me. So, I'm not saying that, you know, it's not possible that a county attorney could do something wrong, but in this case, there was no crime that was committed, and there was no investigation. So, even if there was some wrongdoing, which I will state that there wasn't, there was no due process or any investigation here. And that leads to my final point. I'm gonna get right to it. If you passed an ordinance like this, when state statute and Arizona Supreme Court have already have rules in place that we have to follow, then anybody could just present their case to the grand jury by putting together these documents. And you saw, well, three-page documents, but he also said, "If the exhibits are longer than that, then he's gonna present more to them." Just think about it. Think about the people that, in your life, feel that they're wronged and want to do something about it. Divorces. We have divorces going on constantly, every day in our county. In majority of those cases, either the husband or the wife allege wrongdoing on the part of the other person. They allege that there was child abuse often, when there's children custody issues that go back and forth. There is always allegations that so-and-so stole money. They're hiding money from us. He took money that was in a mutual account. And as we know, most of the time, these matters are resolved, they're community property issues. But if you were allowed to present this to the grand jury, they would be bombarded with these requests. Civil matters, contracting disputes, landscaping, you hire a landscaper, he doesn't show up on time, he doesn't do his job, he doesn't complete the job. I want criminal matters. People that are mad at each other. Going back to the custody and divorce issues, in the majority of those cases, I get letters all the time from people that claim that their husband or wife lied during their court proceedings over their divorce. So, the amount that would inundate our grand jury would be just off the charts. And we'd have 20 cases, approximately, we present every week, and we only have a certain amount of time to do it. Most of those cases involve people that are in custody. If their case does not get heard, and the grand jury does not indict, those people get released. You're talking about child molesters, people that commit sexual assault, child abuse, burglaries, robberies, drug dealers, aggravated assaults, attempted murders, murders, all those cases are presented to the grand jury, not civil cases. Finally, as far as the grand jury goes, they do have the power. They are of the people. They are citizens that come generally, approximately about a third from the Lake Havasu City area, a third from Bullhead, a third from Kingman. Now, they come all over, Oatman, Golden Shores, Golden Valley, all over the county. All those people are eligible and end up serving on the grand jury. They have the power to decide whether to indict somebody. They do not have to accept a case. They can amend it. They can subpoena witnesses if they want to. They can request further evidence and further investigation before they vote on these cases. That's where the power from the people comes. And in keeping in mind that we want to have an objective party look at this, that is why the Arizona Legislature and why the Arizona Supreme Court have enacted the rules that they have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I was so long-winded today.
Somebody have any questions for the county?
I do, Madam Chair.
Yeah, okay.
You gave us a mixed answer there. You're saying Supreme Court, the Arizona State says we can't do it, and then you're saying if we enact an ordinance, people can do it. I don't understand. We can't enact an ordinance if it's illegal, correct?
In my opinion, the Board of Supervisors does not have the power to enact an ordinance that conflicts with the Arizona revised statute.
Okay, so, the second half of what you were telling us doesn't apply? When you were talking about, well, people can come in, and it'll be tied up with all this, so you're saying our legal opinion is that we cannot legally do this, that it needs to be taken up with the state?
That is correct. But in order to be thorough and to point out the reasons behind it, and to be more persuasive to this board, I pointed out what some of the problems were and why we have the rules that we do.
Those are called billable hours? That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Judge Moss, do you have anything to add?
I'll try to be brief. I'm not... In my opinion, Mr. Spar is an extraordinarily intelligent man, and he is a principled man who stands up for what he believes in. In this particular instance, I believe he is wrong. I won't hit the dead... Beat a dead horse like Matt did when it comes to some of the logistical problems, but I will say one thing, if you do this, and a supposing, in theory, it was ruled constitutional, which it isn't, but if it did come out that way, you would be building... Giving even more judges, and I'm short three already, but you'd be giving me even more, and you'd have to give me more courtrooms in order to do this sort of work, and so, you're gonna have to find the money for all that somewhere. Now, that's the practical aspect. I'm gonna go back to some of the legal theory on it. There's a difference between the federal grand jury. There isn't a federal grand jury within the body of the Constitution. There is attached to the Bill of Rights. And Mr. Sp... Well, what Mr. Spau had to say is correct as to the federal level on the grand jury. In the Arizona grand jury system, it's different. The grand jury is found under Article VI. That's the judicial article. Articles, subsection 17 states that the grand jury is only summoned by the superior court, particularly me. And then Article, excuse me, Section 5, Subpart 5, and I'm going by memory, I think I'm passing, but if I'm off by a section or two, forgive me, allows the Supreme Court to promulgate the rules regarding grand jury. That authority is restated under Arizona statutes, so I'll just disagree with supervisor... I'm sorry, county attorney Smith. It's the Arizona Supreme Court who promulgates the rules regarding grand juries. If you want more information about that, I think the decision is called Willis v. Bernini, which lays out some of the differences between the federal system and the state system, and the rule-promulgating authority when it comes to the Arizona grand jury. So, you're the wrong entity to be handling this. The state legislature could maybe weigh in, as it has in many ways, but that's with input from the Arizona Supreme Court. And when it comes down to best hacks, Arizona Supreme Court gets the final say when it comes to how grand juries operate. I do believe there's some frustrations amongst some parts of the citizenry. I think maybe those frustrations are based upon some things not maybe going their way. There may be some concern regarding processes which are in place, but if somebody wants to have the Arizona Supreme Court take a look at the grand jury system, the Arizona Judicial Council meets four times a year, they do have calls with the public at the end of that, and people can present concerns that they have to the Arizona Supreme Court via that mechanism. When it comes to the grand jury system, if someone thinks that some local official, including the county attorney, is doing something wrong, you have the federal grand jury, you have the state grand jury, and there's multiple avenues for relief, so which these public officials can and will be held to account. I remember when I was in law school, I was really embarrassed with the ABSCAM, where Arizona legislatures were allowing themselves to be bribed for a couple hundred bucks. That was humiliating for more than one reason. And people intervened. They took care of those corrupt officials. Matt Smith referenced the Apache County attorney, who allegedly, stress the word allegedly, was up to shenanigans with his wife. That was investigated, it was dealt with. There are processes in place to make sure that corrupt officials are held to account. That does cause probable cause. When it comes to entering into the grand jury, those proceedings are confidential. The foreman of the grand jury decides who gets to be allowed in to that. You don't get to invite yourself to the grand jury under the existing rules. There's more, and if anyone wants to speak with me more about it in theory, I'd be more than glad to. I think I met with some folks, was referenced earlier today, when they wanted me as presiding judge to start a civil grand jury, which is allowed in California, it's not allowed in Arizona, but... And maybe it should be allowed in Arizona, but you have to go speak to your legislatures about that. If anyone has any questions about this process?
Okay, just then, any questions for Judge Moss? Yes, Rose Johnson.
The only thing I would add, when you're talking about ABSCAM, there were so many corrupt legislatures, they had to stop prosecuting them, and the one they stopped with went on to head up a county association, and went on to head up, or not head up, but be one of the executives of Homeland Security.
Well, that is troubling. I did not know that. If I had been an Arizona resident in Michigan, going to law school at the slime, and said, and had known that, I would have been even more embarrassed. So, thank you for that, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for listening to me. I do appreciate it.
Okay, we have a few more people signed up, the ones who didn't give their time to Mr. Spar, Greg Beffert, and then Christopher Dardi. Did you give? Yeah, you gave, and I guess Jennifer Esposito.
Supervisors, for the record, Greg Beffert. I had the privilege of meeting Mr. Spar. I was asked to speak at a local tactical civics meeting. Oh, by the way, so you know, the solutions are gonna come from the ground up. If we want to get out of the mess that we're in in this country, the communism and the Zionism that I talked about, it's gonna come from the ground up. It's not gonna come from the top down. And the reason that Mr. Spar brought this forward, and I could certainly relate to it, is because we've lost trust and confidence in government at a variety of levels. And how this... I got involved with the local community groups, the patriots and them was... I had the personal experience of one being an officer, working for the government for 33 years, so I've witnessed prosecuting attorneys withhold exculpatory evidence. I've worked with bad cops. I've done my best to go after bad politicians, both here and where I used to live, because of their behavior. And what we have now in this system here is a process, a problem with the process. We got gatekeepers. And I've never met Mr. Smith, the county attorney, but what I did have was an incident where I took a criminal complaint to him, to his office, presented it to Cameron Pat, who was the charging deputy DA at the time, over the COVID issue in Havasu. Havasu PD sent an officer to my gym and had it shut down under the color of authority, using the health department as their excuse. I filed a criminal complaint. I had more than enough evidence to show there was eight violations of 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, conspiracy to deprive people of their constitutional rights under the color of authority, and I brought that forward to the district attorney's office, to Mr. Pat. And at first, he was all on board. Yeah, I see, Havasu PD, you know, the mayor and the city manager conspired to put proclamations together that gave the appearance that they had the authority to shut down businesses. It was a... There was fraud, there were other things involved. But after I got it to him, marched it up the stairs, I'm assuming to Mr. Smith, and a decision was made, "Look, we're gonna make ourselves liable here. It was our health department, you know? We had deputies go shut down a restaurant." You know, I met with the sheriff after that, and I, you know, to his credit, he took responsibility for the communication that caused their deputies to shut down that restaurant. You put yourselves in a great deal of civil liability by those actions, but he corrected it, and I give him that.
Thank you.
At least consider this.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito, Kingman. I hope that all of you have actually read Mr. Spar's proposed ordinance. I did. I think there's some merit to it. Whether there's issues with the nuts and bolts of what can be done, or the level of preponderance of evidence that you must bring and things, those are things that could be worked out. But ultimately, this proposal is about oversight and accountability. I'm very interested in looking up the case law that Judge Moss discussed, and I put a lot more stock in what he has to say than what the county attorney has to say, and I would just like to point out why. Because Mr. Smith is an elected official, but he runs on a post. Nobody will run against him. And as he pointed out, he has the absolute oversight about what makes it to the grand jury and what doesn't. But what doesn't make it to the grand jury is when government officials do things that violate the law. And when I ran for office previously, Mr. Smith and his office pursued misdemeanor charges against me, for which he knows perfectly well, there was absolutely zero evidence whatsoever. The enforcement official was a member of the sheriff's department, which Sheriff Schuster did discipline, but trespassed criminally onto my property. You guys cleared up the glitch in the ordinance, but the problem was, is that there was no basis whatsoever to bring charges against me. Those charges were dismissed after the election. They were clearly politically motivated. And during the COVID thing, Mr. Smith admitted to this board from this podium that he used his one and only career appearance at call to the public to disparage me as a political candidate. Well, using county resources to influence the outcome of election is an actual crime, but I don't expect Mr. Smith to bring criminal charges against Mr. Smith. But I don't expect Mr. Smith to bring criminal charges against Mr. Smith. So what Mr. Spar is proposing here is basically something that would be a deterrent for bad behavior, but also that would bring accountability for bad behavior. Because, for instance, offering me a plea bargain on something that you have no evidence I even did is essentially running extortion racket. And extortion is a crime also. But I think there should be some thoughtful consideration into how maybe this could be fixed, how this could maybe be brought forward within compliance. If it just means that Mr. Spar has to go to the Supreme Court and speak at Call to the Public or work through some other avenues, maybe there's a way to do that. But there is a need for something like this. And that's what I wanted to say, is, you know, I had an instance in La Paz County where a judge issued a search warrant for my business that had no evidence, and it wasn't even a criminal search warrant. It was to measure a travel trailer. But you can't hold a judge accountable for violating my rights. At least that's what they said when they tried to defend themselves. So thank you for considering this.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? This item was just for discussion only. If it's going to be taken further, it'll be a different board. Okay, item seventy. One second, I gotta get my thing together here. Oh, sixty-nine, excuse me. Discussion possible action to appoint a chairman and vice chairman of the Board of Supervisors to serve January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Madam Chair.
Chairman Angus.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Um, I wanted to make a nomination, please.
Okay, go right ahead.
I'd like to nominate Travis Lingenfelter as the chairman and vice chairman, Ron Gold.
Okay.
For the upcoming year.
Okay. Is there a second?
Well, I'll second that.
Yes.
Since three-fifths of this board will not be here after the first of the year, is it really appropriate for this board to be choosing the super, the chairman and the vice chairman of a board that you're not going to sit on?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think the, I agree that it's wrong, but I think the clerk has to have the signatures to move ahead with for all the official stuff. And she can't get all of, all that done in time, you know, if you do it in January. I mean, you could do it for a short-term period. Who cares if the clerk has to do it twice?
Yeah, that's what I was always told, that you needed it for the, getting the first meeting together and everything like that. And there have been times when we've had two people leave and they voted on the next chairman. So that's just, again, the way it's always been done, as far as I know. So I'm going to go ahead and we have a nomination on the floor and a second. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item seventy. This was brought by the county manager. Discussion possible action to review staff findings from August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Item thirty-nine. Board of Supervisor request for staff to work with Kingman Healthcare regarding a potential long-term lease of county autopsy morgue space and further review staff findings from item forty for the supervisor request for staff to provide a comprehensive cost breakdown in comparison for transitioning. This is just a culmination of things that we have asked the county in terms of the morgue. So who's gonna, who's prepared?
Need to prove reconsideration before we can even discuss it.
No, that's seventy-one. This is seventy.
Oh, sorry.
Madam Chair and board members, thank you. I will go ahead and get it started. In a nutshell, as you read, this item has two parts to it. Part A, where the board directed staff, and we have findings to present to you. The part B is where we discuss with you those findings. We answer questions and then we take direction as to where the board wants to go from here. With that, with that said, during the second Board of Supervisors meeting in August, board directed staff to explore two options. One was initiate discussion with Kingman Regional Medical Center regarding potential long-term lease for county morgue and to include exploring county buildings as well. That's part A. And part B was provide a comprehensive cost breakdown comparison to transition the staff that is currently providing medical examiner services under contract in-house. So those, both tasks have been completed. We, we will present the findings to you today. Four different departments will be presenting. We have a very short PowerPoint presentation. It's only literally four slides. Public Health will lead off talking about the, the KRMC. We met with the staff, we toured the site, and you will hear what we have and what they submitted. Second will be Public Works, talking about the county buildings that were included for us to review. Third, it will be the Finance Department compiling the information related to transferring these positions into the county and the cost of that and, and the transition process itself. And then you will hear from Procurement. We'll answer your questions and then we hope to get some direction from you as to where you intend to go from here. And with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa Palmer, our Public Health Director. And she will be followed by Steve Lutowski, our Public Works Director, Finance, and then Procurement. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, and thank you, Manager Elters. As he stated, the team met with Kingman Regional Medical Center leadership, and we had an opportunity to tour the site that's located on Sycamore Avenue
off of Stockton Hill Road, which is across the street from the Hampton Hotel. During the tour, the site was determined to be lacking in space and structure and that an extensive build-out would need to be completed for it to function as a medical examiner office. This included expanding the space to at least six thousand square feet and adding items such as an autopsy station with tables, lighting and drains, an intake bay with fencing to secure the perimeter for a drop-off of decedents, men's and women's locker room with toilets for field investigators and pathologists, office space with desks, conference room for meetings with law enforcement and/or families, shelving units, storage coolers with racks, large specimen cooler and storage space. The two options were provided by Kingman Regional Medical Center. And option one is an eighteen, eighteen dollars a square foot with Mojave County paying two point five million for the build-out and a verbalized three percent annual escalator. Option two is thirty dollars a square foot with Kingman Regional Medical Center covering one million toward the build-out modifications and the county paying one point five million for the build-out and also with a verbalized three percent annual escalator. And I will turn it over now to Director Lutowski.
Thank you, Director Palmer. Members of the board, Public Works was tasked with reviewing the feasibility to renovate three properties owned and operated by Mojave County. One property is not shown in this slide, and that is the Lake Havasu City Sheriff's Substation. That substation is approximately two thousand forty square feet. And it was determined early in the process that it would be inadequate in the area to service a fully functional county morgue. So as a result, we penned our research and, and analysis down to two sites. One, the recently vacated Sheriff's Substation in Mojave Valley, as well as the Public Works Traffic Control Storage Building. This is one of the remnant buildings that was formerly part of the Public Works complex before our new Public Works building was completed and occupied in twenty thirteen. It's still used on a limited basis by our Traffic Control Division to store surplus supplies, materials. The slide here offers a side-by-side comparison. However, to really pin down some of the advantages and disadvantages of the two sites, particularly with Mojave Valley, the Sheriff's Substation, that facility has approximately an eight-foot ceiling by which we can work with. That could potentially be problematic for both the construction of new roll-up doors for morgue vehicles, which top out at nearly eight feet tall. We'd only be looking at about a three-to-four inch clearance if we only had eight foot to work with at the substation. As well as industry standards for morgue operating rooms, the industry standards typically call for about a ten-foot ceiling height that would accommodate various mechanical, as well as lighting features, the systems, I should say, in those areas. Comparing that to the Traffic Control Building in Kingman, those dimensions already exist. The Kingman facility is over ten feet ceiling height and already, already contains two roll-up doors. Regarding zoning, the Vander Slice Road site is in an AR zone. It would have to be rezoned to accommodate a morgue use. The Kingman site already has city C-three zoning, which we checked, and it is allowing for a morgue. The Kingman site is also on city sore versus the Mojave Valley site, which is served by Fort Mojave Tribal Utilities, but does involve a lift station to convey waste to the tribal utility. There may be some nuances with regard to some of the morgue waste and how that fits with a lift station. A very general opinion, the cost is approximately two point five million dollars for renovations to bring a fully functional morgue at the Traffic Control Kingman site and approximately three million dollars at the Sheriff's Substation Vander Slice site. I do caveat the three million dollars with the Sheriff's Substation site as possibly being subject to being upwards of three million dollars if we were to get into substantial demolition and renovations to accommodate a higher ceiling. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lutowski? Nothing?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Lutowski. Just for everybody's edification, does footage in your track?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, I was remiss in not bringing that to your attention. It is forty-eight hundred square feet versus eight thousand at the Vander Slice site. We do see a staff, anything above four thousand dollar, four thousand square feet as being plausible to accommodate a fully functional morgue. So to answer your question, yes, it would be.
So you're thinking four thousand square foot is going to be big enough for a coroner's office?
Based on our planning and layout of the minimum, you know, functions and the facilities that would have to be in a working morgue facility, yes. That would be adequate. And this Kingman site provides forty-eight hundred.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions from Mr. Lutowski? Okay, who's next?
Good morning again, Chairman Angus, board members. So I'm just going to go over the, our estimate for budget needs on a recurring annual basis. There is some revenue involved with the medical examiner operations. These are primarily for cremation fees. That's estimated at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, based on the most recent three years' data. On the expense side, it's broken down somewhere to other county budgets, personnel services, supplies, charges for services, and internal service charges. Those, the bulk of, are personnel services. And so this is for eleven full-time equivalent positions, which the breakdown of those is a forensic operations manager, one lead medicolegal death investigator, and then basically a progression series where we have level three, level two, and level one death investigators. And so there is two level three, two level two, and then three at level one. And then the last two positions are a forensic autopsy technician and an office specialist assist with administrative duties. On the supply side, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and those are for consumable supplies that both the death investigators would use as well as that the pathologist would use in the morgue operating room. Then we also have charges for services at a hundred and fifty-five thousand and internal service fees at about two hundred thousand dollars. I do want to point out that the total on this, when you net the revenue against the expenses, is just under one point two million dollars. That figure, though, does not include the cost of an actual medical examiner, either as a county employee or as a contracted employee. And based on recent hiring data from several counties in Arizona, we estimate that that cost would be anywhere from, from three hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars a year. So that is something to consider. And the one other element that is not included in here is the cost of locum services. So if we have a forensic pathologist on county staff, that individual will take vacation from time to time. They will not be available. And so in order to get those services provided, we either bring somebody in or we ship the bodies of the decedents to a neighboring county and have an IGN placed to have those services performed for us. And that annual cost is estimated at anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars a year. I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions for Mr. Mornian?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson.
On your, with the coroner's, probably if you bring him in, if you're going to be paying him, the sour you're talking about, I'm guessing he'll have to have four weeks a year paid vacation. You think that fifty to a hundred thousand dollars while he's gone is a little, a little cheap? Shouldn't we be raising that cost up a little?
For the locum services, Supervisor Johnson?
Yeah, I mean, if, if the guy's gone, he's going to have at least a four-week vacation.
So we estimated that on a cost of about five thousand dollars a day for locum services. And generally, when you use those services, the pathologist that comes in is able to do five to six autopsies over the course of that day. And so that's what the estimate is based on. We feel that it is reasonable.
And those numbers you gave us, of what, in eleven people? What's the current workload, not workload, but employee load that the contract has?
Supervisor Johnson, the, the current provider has nine full-time equivalent staff positions. But our understanding, and so our eleven FTEs is based on the addition of two administrative positions. Basically, one, one manager and one office specialist. Our understanding is that the current provider himself handles much of the administrative load. And then he also has personal staff that assists with that. And that's why we come up with eleven versus nine FTEs.
He doesn't have a administrator now? That was the reason that the other guy got rid of it?
Supervisor Johnson, no, my understanding is, is that he handles a lot of those administrative duties himself and is assisted by one of his personal staff.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Mornian.
With that, I'll turn it over to our procurement director.
Now I can officially say good afternoon. Thank you, Board. So really, I don't have, this is not advancing for me. There we go. I don't have any backup to share with you. Ultimately, for me, mine is a question of where do we go from here? So my role will come into play once the board has made a decision and directed us how to move forward. We realize that this is a large undertaking, bringing medical examiner services in-house. And so there's a few things that we would need to address with the board before we move forward. Of course, there's the budget development, addressing the one-time expenses and the recurring expenses, determining what facilities you actually want us to pursue. Would you want us to pursue modifying some county-owned facilities, working through the KRMC lease? And then it would be the timelines for the transition of staff, the expected timeline overall of transitioning staff. I know that our current contracted service provider has notified that they're having a hard time hiring employees. And I don't think it'll be any easier for us to hire employees. Our hope is that we could take on who they have existing, but they have a lot of vacancies. And so talking through, what does that transition look like? Do we amend our current contract in order to allow for the transition of staff? Do it at a gradual point? And then realizing that to get any of these facilities up and operational, there's time involved with that. If the county is going to do it, there's the design. And then there's going out to bid for any of the construction improvements necessary in the county facilities. If we're doing it through a lease option with KRMC, then they will need time to secure any improvements to their building. And so we still have this, what's the future of the contracted services going to look like? The contract with Serenity Memorial Group technically expires on November thirtieth. And although there's a provision in the contract to go month to month, that could potentially be challenged. And if we know that we've got a long-term plan, if we know that we're going to take six months, twelve months to transition, we probably need to do something a little bit more short-term, but concrete. And then our long-term options, I think that we have to come back to the fact that taking these employees in-house, the death investigators, the admin support, does not take on the pathology services, does not take on, take on the necessary locum services when a pathologist is either on vacation or just requests time off as a contracted employee. It also doesn't deal with any of the specialists that are easy. It also doesn't deal with any of the specialists that are easier to manage through a private party than they are through government. So we would need to secure various things. And so ultimately, mine is just kind of, how do we wrap this up and think about, we need direction from the Board on all of these things, budget, facilities, transitioning of staff, and what we're going to do with our current service provider, how long we're going to do that, and what the deadlines are for staff to be able to bring this in-house, start recruiting, et cetera.
Okay, any questions? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's no possible way you think that if we said, okay, we're going with this site, whatever it is today, that in six months, we're going to have anything ready to go, is there?
That is probably not a question for me. Director Lutowski could probably answer that better, and it depends. I think six months is probably not reasonable, generally speaking. We've done some pretty quick turnaround on design. Most of our major construction is usually six months to eight months, once we've awarded a contract. So I'm thinking it'd probably be at least a year before we would have facilities open. I don't know what the KRMC proposal was, how quickly they think they could make the improvements, but the county manager might have a little bit more information on that as well.
Right, we're looking at a year, no matter what. I, personal opinion, while I know some people don't like the idea of where we have the contract now, and this Board is, you know, three members, and the majority of not being here next time, I would think that the Board, only option is to continue the contract, the gentleman we have now, let a new Board decide what they want to do, so they can be done in time. And if we said today, okay, we're going to go with the traffic building, by the time they get things done, I don't think it's going to be the right move, anyway. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. I tend to agree with you. We do have some people signed up to speak. Is there any other questions?
Madam Chair, if I may just respond to Supervisor Johnson's questions, question. Indeed, the hospital proposal did indicate, given what they would need to do, which would be comparable and similar to what we would have to do in a county building, they said Anyway, thank you. They did indicate that it would take them a year to equip, to remodel, forgive me, design, construct, remodel the building, and equip it to make it a certain turnkey operation. And I do believe if the Board was to go in the direction of doing that to a county building, it would take us a similar time. I'm fairly certain that we can get it done in a year.
Okay. Okay, that's it for you. And then we're going to move on to some people who have signed up. Robert Trebes, who is the police chief from Bullhead City. Been waiting here all day.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for allowing me to, opportunity to speak today. Mine is just...
Try again.
Okay. Just some short comments. I just want to express my views in my official capacity about the provider that you have now and the service that Mr. Hasset has provided over the last couple of years. I've been in law enforcement in Mojave County for just shy of 22 years, and I can tell you, prior to Mr. Hasset taking over the services, that it's been, well, less than desirable. In fact, quite frankly, it's been really abhorrent. You know, there's been times, many times, working, I started with Mojave County Sheriff's Office, and now I've been with Bullhead for 20 years, where, you know, medical examiner's office not even responding out, or taking hours and hours and hours. And that just hasn't been the case with your current provider. I, you know, I obviously, you know, I'm not here, I don't get involved in any of the political stuff. You know, Supervisor Johnson just mentioned there are some people that maybe don't like who's providing. I just wanted to express my view that we're extremely happy with the service that we have now, and we have had over the last couple of years since Mr. Hasset's taken over. And the reason why I express that is because from my point of view, running the police department down in Bullhead, is that, you know, if we've got non-response or delayed response to several hours, that means we have officers out on these investigative calls for a very long time. And of course, then they're not freed up to go do other things, and we're extremely busy agency, as all agencies in Mojave County are. So that was really my own comments today. I'm extremely happy with the service he's providing. I would hope that that would continue, just because of what I've seen over my 20, nearly 22 years in this county. So, thank you.
Frank Paolini? Is he still here? Okay. Okay, are you guys together? Do you want to come up, Sharon? Do you want to, do you need some time?
Phone off.
Is he giving his time to you, or he separately?
I probably won't need that much time, but I might go a little over, and I didn't want to cause a problem. I'm here as I was here two weeks ago, but we didn't get time. And I'm here to thank the three supervisors from the August 19th meeting.
Yeah, is the microphone on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm here to thank the supervisors at the August 19th meeting, who, the three of you did vote to suspend the contract with Mr. Hasset for his medical examiner services, because this is what's needed to be done. But I was upset that with all of the information that was given there about the, how the bodies are kept, the unethical practices, and the investigations, and I was very sad that Hildy still voted yes, knowing all of this was going on, and Eugene. And I know Hildy, and I know, I think he wants best for the community, that's what you've always said, and in your interview recently, too, that you were for integrity of the government and for us, the community. And for us, the community, that means if this medical examiner's office should be run properly, for the deceased, to give them dignity and respect, not to be treated like they have been treated. You saw in the investigations, this is not good. And I'm up here because my daughter's investigation by his investigator was not done properly. And even on your own county website, it says what the dos and doses of a medical examiner investigator can and cannot do, and that was done. So that got me involved in wanting to find out, what can we do better? We need to put an in-house facility with our own pathologist medical examiner. We really need to do this. It's what the county needs. Every other county has one, and we need a real pathologist at the helm, not a businessman who is using our county funds. You give it to him, and he can use it however he wants, so he can make a profit and put some of that money into his business pocketbook. No other county office is run for a profit. This has to stop. We have to get on board with what everybody else is doing in the county and have our own medical examiner, not one on call that he uses Dr. Mosley in Phoenix. He can't be on call to come to a site here. He's 200 and some miles away. We really need to get on board, and I really hope that you will do this. Now, he mentioned that he uses substations for his bodies that he can't take down to Havasu. Of course, now he's moved his office to a family-owned structure on Lakewood Road, but he uses substations to put the bodies in, when he can't, his crew can't take the time, or they're too tired to drive all the way to Havasu. Well, I received an email forwarded to me by a man who did his own investigation, and he pointed out at 2636 Highway 95 in Bullhead City, in a building that Hasset owns, because Hasset had stated to our former health director that his substations are in a facility he owns, other than his funeral homes. So we went there, and yes, behind that facility, attached to two of those office suites, are two metal containers with refrigeration units and air conditioners on top, and he saw a medical examiner car there. Are these the substations? He's moved to a new place now. Have any of you been there? If it takes 6,000 square feet to have a medical examiner's office, and he's put it into this warehouse structure on Lakewood Road, where are autopsies being done, and how are the bodies being cared for? Have you been there? We need answers and transparency. We don't know any of this. Where are these substations? Is this one of them? And here's a picture of one that we found. So we wanted answers. And now we have Mr. Hasset having his attorney contact me and other people who have talked about him and how he's handling his office, sending out letters to cease and desist, or he's going to sue all of us. And I don't think the county supervisors would like the headlines to read, "Mojave County Supervisor's Medled Examiner Appointee Threatens to Sue an 82-Year-Old Bereaved Mother," me. This is getting out of hand. You really have to rein Mr. Hasset in from being involved in any of these duties as a medical examiner. He's not anything near that. He's a businessman. He owns a florist. He owns Serenity Hospice, which is also being run under the new medical examiner office. Is there any accountability here from the supervisors? Do you check on anything? The deceased in our county deserve dignity and respect, and I hope that you will respond and do it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hasset is here, and I'm sure he'll be down, and I'm sure he'll answer some of your questions as well.
Was this shown?
Excuse me?
Was this shown? Okay.
We're done. Yes. Okay. We have Jennifer Esposito, I want you to come up.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito, Kingman. Okay, I would like to address Part A of this, because, so that everyone listening at home is aware, if they're not looking at the agenda. It says, "Board of Supervisor Requests for Staff to Work with Kingman Healthcare, Inc., DBA Kingman Regional Medical Center KRMC Regarding a Potential Long-Term Lease of the County Autopsy Morgue Space." So here's part of the thing. I would like to point out on the record that staff, meaning Mr. Elters, is on that Board. Okay, so there's a clear and obvious conflict of interest if staff is going to be negotiating with themselves, first of all. But the other thing that I would like to point out is that the county is the landlord of KRMC. That's why you have Hospital District Board One. The county leases the property to KRMC. Now, the district board is an elected position. They have not, to the best of my understanding, negotiated the current lease with KRMC. Maybe someone other than Mr. Elters should be talking with Dave French, the interim chairman of Hospital District One Board, about including the possibility of saying, listen, if you want us to renew your lease, you need to dedicate and donate something back to the county on this, and give us some space, or something. I'm just putting that out there as a negotiating point. You do have a problem in that the chairman has resigned, and so you do have a split board, but the lease has not currently been negotiated. So you probably have some wiggle room in there to maybe get something at a lot lower price point. I don't know. It's something worth pointing out. But it absolutely needs to be, to be done in a way that Mr. Elters is not involved, because he is a board member of KRMC, of the governing board. So I don't know how you're going to get in and around this. Maybe the end run is not to use KRMC at all? I don't know. But there is an obvious conflict of interest that needed to be pointed out on the record. And, you know, given that you lease it, this used to be a county hospital, and so you owned the property. That seems to me like that puts you in the catbird seat, right? I mean, maybe there's another option here that hasn't been explored yet, but it certainly seems to be something that could benefit the taxpayers of Mojave County, if you can work that into the lease of the building that you, the county, and we, the people, own. I don't know. I'm not going to pass judgment on Mr. Hasset one way or another, or what needs to be done in the interim, whether we need to, you know, let him continue on while you muddle through this. But you do have some decisions to make, fiscal decisions and policy decisions, and I just wanted to remind the Board that that is an option that no one's talked about, and information that maybe you weren't even thinking about, that I think you should strongly consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Ryan Swap, and then Daniel Sudolofsky.
Madam Chair, members of the Board. Appreciate the opportunity to come speak. You know, I had some prepared remarks. I'm, I'm kind of torn with even what to say. When I see the figures that are presented by staff, I'm surprised, I'm shocked by the numbers that I'm seeing there. It's, I mean, it's easy to see how you come in under budget on these projects, because I can just share with you my experience in Yuma, where we currently perform the medical examiner services. The space that we use there, it's really nice. It's one of the nicer morgues that I've, that I've been in. You know, I'm being generous, if it's 2,500 feet, and we run with four and a half FTEs there. So I'm not sure where these numbers and figures are coming from, but, I mean, I would love to have nine FTEs, and, you know, 6,000 square feet, and $3 million to do refurbishments. But, I mean, we're a pretty conservative county, and that seems, it seems excessive to me. What I wanted to say was, there are three parts of this. There's the pathologist part, medical examiner part, there's the morgue part, and then there's the employees. I really believe that the employees are best served to be in county employees. But where you put the morgue is really going to matter. I think you really need to think about that. The hardest piece of all three of these is getting a pathologist or pathologist to do this service. It's been, you've had very little response in terms of the RFPs in the past. Demand for pathologists is at all-time highs. Our, our group, Monolith Diagnostics, has been looking at hiring pathologists. There's 15 open seats for general pathology in Arizona alone. It's really, really competitive. It's easier to get a general pathologist than a forensic pathologist. I would urge you to put the morgue in Kingman. It's just going to allow you, it's the county seat, first of all. Second of all, it's, it's going to allow you to recruit better in an already trying time. And then finally, I would request that the Board would consider a direct process for professional services, previously mentioned, similar to those for an engineering or an architectural firm, given the demonstrated lack of understanding from procurement around board servocation issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dr. Sudolofsky.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board, for the opportunity to speak. I think us in pathology, we do lots of root cause analysis in the laboratory, like, and so I think it's important to ask ourselves a question, why are we having this conversation? The root cause is that no qualified pathologists have wanted to perform the role of medical examiner for this county and provide standard level of services, possibly for decades. And we do. You know, the, as Dr. Swap mentioned, the difficulty in recruiting pathologists is the worst it's ever been nationally. There's been an opening in Havasu City for over a year. Underestimating the difficulty of actually getting a pathologist in here, even historically, should not be underestimated. Mojave County is historically a very difficult place to recruit physicians in general, and this is going to be critical. I think indeed, and the other thing I would say is that the idea of a single person being the medical examiner and using locums is not realistic. You're going to need two people. Pathologists don't work alone. And so you're going to need two pathologists. Virtually every medical examiner, no matter how big or small, has at least two. So that's $800,000. Our group has proposed to do this work for half of that in perpetuity. Our group has proposed to do this work for half of that in perpetuity. We're established. We live here. We're stable, and we want to perform this very critical service to the people of our community. I would also reiterate with, I've been a pathologist for 30 years. I have 15 years' experience as a medical examiner. These proposals are far more elaborate than they need to be. In fact, the morgue in Kingman could probably be made functional for less than $50,000 temporarily while we do something a little more serviceable. It could be implemented in weeks to a few months. That's reality. I wish somebody had actually consulted people who do this work before we went forward in creating these plans. I also think that, in agreement with Dr. Swap, you know, when you are considering professional contracts with architects or engineers, it seems to me also reasonable to interview and make the decision directly about your county physician.
Doctor, can I ask you something?
Sure.
Are you a forensic pathologist?
I'm not, but I have 15 years of experience doing forensics.
Okay, but is Dr. Swap forensic? So...
So, what happens is...
You'd have to be in the same position to be hiring.
Not true. So, sorry. Let me just explain how this works, because it works this way in lots of counties, because forensic pathologists are extremely rare, rare animal. Less than 2% of people who go into pathology go into forensics, actually. The sort of public doesn't know that. What happens in many counties is you'll have a pathologist like me that has training in pathology. I haven't sat for boards, I haven't done a fellowship, but I am a destined investigator, and I have taken many ME continuing medical education courses in forensics and continue to do so. And for 95% of deaths in this county, that's what you need, right? We're not, we don't need, it's not murders, right? These are not under suspicious circumstances. We need to explain how someone died. And if there is something that appears to be untoward, or there may be some possibility that this may at some point end up in a courtroom, those are the few cases that one will send to, we outsource, just like the county attorney outsources some cases to other counties because it's better to handle it that way, so do we. But, it's a small proportion, a small proportion of total cases, and the cost of which for Yuma is like $50,000 a year. That's far short of the $400,000 it's going to cost you to have a second forensic pathologist if you can find one.
Okay. Is your contract with Yuma County, who's your contract with?
With the Yuma Regional Medical Center.
With the hospital?
And the county. So, from what I understand, the county has the contract with the hospital. We have the contract with the hospital, and therefore, because of that contract with the hospital, our group provides those services to the county. So, it's an indirect contractual arrangement. When I was in New York, New York State, I was the medical examiner for Tompkins County in New York State for a long time. My contract then was directly with the county as a pathologist to provide those services, and there was also an arrangement with the hospital to use the morgue facilities, which, by the way, was only about 1,000 square feet for a county roughly the same population as this.
But then, there's all the other stuff, the transportation, I mean, all the administrative part of being our medical examiner's office. So, it's a little bit more complicated.
It's not as complicated as people would make it to be.
Well, okay. Well, thank you very much. Any questions for the doctor? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Hassett.
Ms. Esposito, that's the nicest thing anyone's said on record, so I appreciate that. You're not going to pass judgment on me. I do have a couple of letters from our other doctors if you'd like them to read, otherwise I can turn them into the clerk if you want to just review them. So, it's completely up to you. I just need to know how much time I have.
After.
Okay.
She'll distribute.
Sorry?
No, I said, no, go ahead. You can give this to her after, and she'll distribute.
Okay. This letter is from Dr. Hu. He's the chief pathologist from Pinal County and one of our locums doctors, to whom it may concern. "I've been practicing forensic pathology as a forensic pathologist in Arizona for 24 years. I'm writing this letter in support of using forensically trained pathologists to conduct medicalegal investigations and forensic autopsies in the deaths in Mojave County. Current operation mode of the county is contracting with Serenity Memorial Group. While we have room for improvement, however, it utilizes forensic pathologists to conduct autopsies, a practice that should be encouraged. Furthermore, a relatively long-term contract would facilitate staff recruiting, retention, and professional development." He goes on to make some points of clarification, and then he does say, "If you need anything, please feel free to reach out to his office." The second letter is from Dr. Cross. She's the chief medical examiner of Yavapai County, as well as another one of our locums doctors. According to ARS 11519592, death investigations and forensic post-mortem examinations are to be performed by forensic pathologists who have not completed a forensic fellowship, do not have the competence or the training to perform forensic autopsies nor special autopsy techniques. This practice would raise concerns with the community stakeholders, law enforcement, and county attorney's offices, as well as create potential implications in legal proceedings. Furthermore, toxicology analysis required forensic cases can only be performed by accredited forensic toxicology laboratories, not a clinical laboratory." Couple of points that I wanted to bring up really quick, so, and I do want something on the record that this board did not vote to suspend my contract. I do think that was a pretty negative statement, so I do want that made. It was just not to renew on a renewal period. There are a lot of alleged accusations with regards to dignity and respect of bodies kept. I have yet to have any of that pointed out to me, even with the Sheriff's Department investigation that does state that there are no criminal activity that was found. I do not own funeral homes. I've made that on numerous, stated that on numerous occasions. The statement of, "We need to have a real pathologist at the helm," is pretty derogatory and close to defamatory. We do. Dr. Mosley's been the chief medical examiner for this county over a decade. He was a locum doctor for Dr. Worrell, who was also the chief medical examiner for this county. And Mojave County, based on this current contract providing with our organization, has three chief medical forensic pathologists at their disposal to perform their autopsies. Substations, yes, we absolutely did have substations, and she is absolutely correct. We do allow our staff, the investigators, to drop those cases at substations to alleviate any additional stress from them from traveling. We do no longer have any other substations. We've relocated to one building in the anticipation for the culmination of this contract. The photos that Sharon took while, yes, trespassing on one of our commercial properties was a shipping container that was a storage unit. The air conditioning units, those are condenser, those are, thank you, those are condenser units that are for all of the suites that are in front of the medical building, or, excuse me, in front of the shipping containers on the building that's facing the highway. Anyone is more than welcome to go look at those. She, in fact, also, I do believe, made a police report to Bullhead City PD for odds, someone did. My point to this matter is, is that we, our facility, opened the containers for Bullhead PD's investigative department or bureau, and because they wanted to see if there was dead bodies stored inside of there. So, that's done. Arch does live, Dr. Mosley does live in Phoenix. He also has a home in Havasu. I can attest to an ME vehicle being there. I would have to check GPS for that. She is absolutely correct that our attorney did issue a cease and desist. It was all predicated on defamatory statements that she continually posts on social media and has negatively impacted not only our department, meaning the medical examiner's office, my companies, and me as an individual. So, yes, I have done that, and I will continue to do that. You are correct, as far as Yuma County goes, those contract, Yuma County contracts with Yuma Medical, Yuma Medical contracts with his organization, they have four to four and a half full-time employees. That would be phenomenal. We actually don't. We're seeking 11 based on the fact that, or, excuse me, the county and our staff would be seeking 11. That is predicated on exactly what you said, there's investigations of transportations. His organization does not conduct the investigation of the transportation. That's done by the Yuma County Sheriff's Department. I do believe in previous meetings, Director, Manager Elters has a great relationship with Yuma County, and I'm sure that can be verified. Forensic pathologists are extremely hard to find, which is why we've had to result in locums, and we've had a great relationship with these doctors. They've been with us for over two and a half years now, and they continue to support us. They were just here this last weekend. Supervisor Johnson, you asked if $100,000 was a stretch to the finance director as far as locums providing four weeks off of services. It's a little steep, but you also have to take into consideration that some of these locums doctors are bringing their own autopsy techs with them, which includes more hotel, more travel, more expense associated. So, while I do believe that it is on the, a little bit on the higher side, it's not totally off, so it is a realistic number. You also have to take into consideration sick time or any kind of overflow that may occur from a death. We've seen the numbers with regards to building out a facility. So, at our current rate in which we've rented in the past in the facility that Dr. Jervis, Dr. Worrell, Dr. Mosley, and that we continue to operate, at that rate, it would be roughly 40 to 42 years for you to get an ROI on your build-out. You obviously know the rental rates, locums doctors. Admin is, I don't remember which supervisor asked this question, but I do conduct a lot of the administration duties outside of anything medical. That's all done by our forensics office manager, and then Dr. Mosley, who's our chief, and then Lupita, who is also in my admin department. So, clerical stuff, like when the health department provides, has provided the data for the cases, that comes from, directly from myself or Lupita. Lastly, County Document 21P is in Paul 04, Item 7. Mojave County does not provide facilities, equipment, personnel, or other resources. Contractors shall have the ability to coordinate and arrange for all resources to perform the duties. This is in regards to the statement that was made about me relocating our facilities. Yes, we indefinitely, we did relocate our facilities, and again, that was in proactive to the end of our contract. I'm sorry I spoke so fast, but I wanted to make sure I respect everybody's time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay. I'm sure there are some questions. No? No questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Appreciate your testimony today, Mr. Hassett.
Thank you.
In prior testimony, you acknowledged that your contract was a temporary fix, that it was a little unorthodox, and we do appreciate your services and that you were still committed to working with the county until we figure this whole thing out. Is that still accurate?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Lingefelter, absolutely, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Chairman, if I can just add, so Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Chief Deputy James Schopman was going to come down and just speak briefly. He's no longer available to do that. He had to leave, go to a hearing. But, he asked me to just pass on this information briefly, that from our office's concern, the county attorney's office's concern, Doctors Mosley and Hu have been great at trial. Our office has a great relationship with them. They're responsive, and so we just want to make sure the board is aware of that.
Thank you very much. So, we basically have two issues here, what we're going to do for the future and what we're going to do until we decide, right? And, like Supervisor Johnson, this is a decision for the next board to make, not us. So, really, I think that the one thing that we can do today, and that we almost have to do, because the contract is up, we have to at least extend it. The time, the term of it, that, you know, you tell us, but that's what I think.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I don't disagree at all. Since we have it on the agenda, would it be possible to ask a few clarifying questions on the information that we've been presented this morning? I'd like to start with just a few questions to Manager Elters and perhaps his staff. I've watched this contract for a lot of years, and facility and staffing, they've always been the issue with these contracts. There's been a lot of forensic pathology doctors that may be willing to provide just their service. They come in and they do, they do what they do, but they're just not too excited about the facility and the whole enchilada thing. So, when you really think of it as the three parts, right? The facility, the staffing, and the ME services themselves. I think we need to do something different. I appreciate the research that's gone in, but I do have some clarifying questions. When you talk about staffing first, you've recommended 11 staffing, and we've heard about, with the AP word, for instance, benchmarking, you know, to see how everybody else is doing things. I didn't see any information in here regarding the other 14 counties, their medical examiner function, and how many staffing that they use. To give me sort of a bearing about, is 11 excessive? Is 11 the right number? I've heard a little bit of testimony, and I don't know if I heard an exact number or not, from Yuma County, where they're using far less staff than 11. And I would assume that, I only know demographic information, that they're about comparable with our size, and I assume that people die at the rate that they die here, about the same. I don't know how many staff they use. I don't know how many staff Yavapai uses. I'm not sure if you have that information. How many staffing does Yavapai County ME have? How many staff does Yuma County staffing have? Those comparable counties, so that I can gauge the number of 11.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Lingefelter, thank you. I'll do my best. I'm going to ask also Melissa to step up and help in answering or trying to answer some of it. As far as the 11s, Supervisor Lingefelter, the incumbent, the current provider has nine, and they have a lot of cross-shared functions. So, in assessing what they do and how they do it, and the fact that we would need, understanding that we are a public agency and we have a little bit more restraints and limitations, we felt that we would need an office manager and an analyst to assist in developing and sharing data and doing office duties. The comparison to Yuma County is really apples to oranges. Supervisor, Yuma County, the medical examiner is under the sheriff, and the sheriff has the investigators, so those are not included in the four and a half that you heard about. Furthermore, as you heard, Yuma County does have contract with Pinal County. It's not a contract, it's an IGA to ship those forensic cases, and they dictate to them when they can take them, and they're responsible for the cost to get them there, wait for them, and then transport them back. That cost started at $50,000. It's certainly climbing. It's higher than that today. Yavapai County does have one chief pathologist, that's Dr. Cross. She was just hired. I don't, Melissa, I don't know if you have the number from, I know they shared them at one time, both Yavapai and Coconino County. Yep, as you know, Supervisor, we kept in mind the size of Mojave County. It is larger and more spread out than Yuma County is. So, it is larger land-wise and more spread out, and we needed to keep that in mind as far as investigators and transporting bodies as needed and so on. So, do you have the numbers for Coconino and Yavapai County? And if not, we will get them and share them with you.
I can get the numbers for Coconino. I only have Yavapai because that's the one that I spent the most time with as our sister county, so we model a lot of things off of Yavapai. They have two forensic technicians, and when they're in a good place for forensic technicians, they do not respond to every death, though, the way that we do. So, they actually have somebody that transports without responding to the scene, and so then an autopsy is done after the fact. And there's no, the investigation on scene, they rely on law enforcement to provide those.
The reason I ask the question is, I try to be, I mean, if we're making important public policy decisions like this, I like to be data-driven, and I don't like to recreate wheels. And so, for me, I think it just makes logical sense to look at those comparable counties to us, and, you know, how many staffing are they using? Why are they using those? And then, how are they conducting their business? And then, making specific customizations to work for Mojave County. But, unless I understand the methodology that went into saying, "We need 11," it's hard for me to understand if that's reasonable or not.
So, Coconino has three forensic investigators, a medical examiner, a forensic manager, and then forensic investigator, which is the lead, and then the forensic tech investigator. So, that looks like a higher level.
So how many is that total?
So that's four forensic investigators, plus a forensic investigator lead, plus a forensic ops manager, and then two medical examiners.
That's Coconino?
Correct.
That'd be eight.
And then Yavapai is confirmed at four, and then Pinal has fifteen.
Fifteen people. Okay. All right. And then the second, I just want to say thank you for the analysis that was done on the facility. It looks like the, anything to do with the hospital would be way more expensive than, than outfitting, say, the Public Works I did have a question since you're at the podium, Director Palmer. In other counties, I know that perhaps this function is under the Public Health Department, but I know in other counties that it's also perhaps under the sheriffs. And if you know why that is, and why we're recommending that it be located under the public health?
Melissa, let me, let me jump in, and you can add.
Thank you, Manager.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Lingefelter, in the tour that we took two and a half years ago, as we prepared for the current contract to come in place, we toured both Coconino and Yavapai County. And what I, and just so you know, we arranged for those tours. So my counterparts was there, the medical examiners from both counties were there, and the Public Health Director from both counties were there. What we heard, and what I'm relating to you in both counties, it started with third-party contract, the pains that we were going through that they went through, and then ultimately brought it in-house. And it started as a standalone department, not under Public Health. And it did not, it had, it had significant challenges. What we heard from them, and I'm paraphrasing and going from memory, is forensic pathologists want to concentrate on the task at hand and really are not interested in administrative stuff, perhaps similar to what Dr. Mosley told us. So ultimately, they brought it in under Public Health, and it's working out really well. That started in Coconino first. Yavapai went through similar, almost mirrored process. They started on its own, brought it under Public Health, and it's working really well for them. That is why we thought it would be really in our best interest. Those are the two comparable counties to us, as you, I think you noted earlier, in size, in population, in size. And we started from that perspective by putting it under Public Health and did put it, put it under Public Health, under the current condition, the current provider, with the vision of keeping it under Public Health as we go forward, whether we bring it in-house totally or some hybrid format. And Melissa, please feel free to add anything that I left out.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
To answer his question, the Sheriff's Department hasn't wanted it.
Thank you. The only other thing I would say is, I don't know what the appetite is of the board to make a lot of these decisions, but I, I would favor a long-term solution where we, we transition over a facility to just, so we can stop talking about it and just have one. And then the staffing, if we could take those over in a long-term arrangement and just, whether or not we take an ME and we try to hire one in-house, or if we just have, that's our only contract for ME services only, I think that that would be superior to what this county has continued to struggle with. And as a part of that, I would just hope, and this goes back to the dignity of the decedents, that all autopsies should be performed within forty-eight hours or seventy-two hours if over a weekend.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Can we speak to the piece about the, the turnover time for the, I don't have it in front of me. Do you have it? The, the model for turnaround time, I mean, that would be ideal for, to be able to provide an autopsy report and conduct, or provide the autopsy and have the report ready within that timeframe. But I believe it's, it's ninety days is the, do you have it?
For an autopsy to be performed?
Yes. According to the Medical Examiner State Board, that's the, the guidelines that they have.
Report, right? That's not the autopsy. I'm talking about the autopsies themselves. Is that, is it not a best practice to?
Oh, I thought you were speaking of-
No, is it not a best practice to conduct an autopsy within forty-eight hours? Especially if you need to draw blood and things like that. I mean, if you'd wait too long, the blood's going to be dried.
No, go right ahead.
In an ideal, Madam Chair, Supervisor Lingefelter, in an ideal world, yes, if we could perform them within forty-eight hours, we would. When we have availability of pathologists, they are performed possibly even same day. It happened just last week. Blood is drawn immediately. So labs, toxicology, those type of things are done by investigative staff and the forensic managers that we were talking about from a staffing standpoint. And those are done on a regular basis that were sent out. Once the autopsy is performed and we are able to do histology, then, and if the forensic pathologists do request that, that is done after the fact. Unfortunately, with the model that we are operating in and the county has operated in for many, many years, the pathologists have never lived here. So in a perfect world, we would get it to where the pathologist lived in Mojave County in some capacity, and they would work for you, and they'd be able to come in. But forty-eight hours would be an ideal scenario. Yes, sir.
Appreciate the information. My statement was, and let me confirm with Melissa Palmer, is it a best practice that autopsies are performed within forty-eight hours, or if it's over a weekend, seventy-two hours?
It is best practice.
And that's, that's what my statement was, that I would hope that a long-term solution, because in Mojave County, what we've seen with other things, we, we set the bar high, that we would strive and, and capture and arrive at that best practice in Mojave County. That's all I said.
Correct. It just takes some time to get the blood work back from the lab, if there is blood drawn, and then to do the histology. So just understanding that an autopsy is the, the investigation of the body itself. However, there's other components that go along with an autopsy, where you have to send it out to a lab. It has to, we receive a report.
No, I understand that. I was talking about the autopsy itself. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
I have a question.
Okay.
Doctor Swab?
Doctor Swab, can you come down, please?
So it appeared to me that, that you guys thought you could gear up rather quickly with a minimal facility?
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Can you expound on that?
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to. So, I mean, it, it's not, it doesn't need to be too elaborate. You basically need body refrigeration. And you, you need a place, you need a small office space, and you need a place to do an autopsy. And it's, it's pretty simple. You know, the, the pathology suite that we have right now at KRMCC, which I think was separate from the space that was looked at, it's adjacent to the space that was looked at by the county. We currently have body refrigerators. We have some other storage in there that we could move and put additional refrigeration there. We currently have a drain. The, the room is actually a previous surgical suite. And so it, it has a place for a light. It has a place to do autopsies. It has a sink. The only thing that we would need to purchase really would be a bed, probably another scissor lift for bodies, and some refrigeration units. It's, it's really not super complicated. Yeah, we could absolutely do that.
So theoretically, you could run that at your, at the Kingman Hospital location until we could build out a morgue?
If you told me today that you wanted a contract with us to do that, we could absolutely do that. What we would do, if we were starting today, I would say, yes, we can do that for you. We would get some, we would get some truck refrigeration until we could get the refrigeration units in the building. We would, you know, we, we don't have an ideal bed, but we could improvise on, on that for the autopsies, and we could have that within weeks. Yeah, I mean, it's not something that, you know, would take me six or eight months to get to. We, we, we would, we could do that. Absolutely.
Thank you. Anything else you wanted to expound on?
Yeah, I would. I'd like to talk about, I'd like to talk about Yuma, and I'd like to talk about our, our experience there. It's true, it is kind of apples and oranges because it's the Sheriff's Department that, that, that works on that. But it's not like all the Sheriff's Department deputies work there. There are four to five of them that are supposed to be air-gapped from the rest of the Sheriff's Department. And it's four to five people total, including a supervisor. There's, there's no other fat in there. There's four or five investigators that go do death scenes, that come back, that do the reports. There's nobody else. So it is four or five. And, you know, Supervisor Lingefelter, when you were asking about that number, I can't remember if it was Coconino or Yavapai, you came up with that number of eight. That included pathologists. I can tell you, in the RFP proposal that we submitted, we included the budgets both for Yavapai and Coconino County in that RFP. And I can tell you that they both called for two pathologists in each county. The Yavapai County ME that, that was just hired, they had a vacancy there for a really long time. So, you know, I'm kind of trying to hit a bunch of different items here. But, you know, it's really painful. I appreciate being called up to, to talk about this. It's really painful to hear people talk about what my everyday experience is. It's like if you're a cop and you're watching a show about cops. You know, it's like, it's like, I actually know what happens in an autopsy. I actually perform them. And I'd like to also just respond to Supervisor Angus. You asked my colleague if he's a forensic pathologist. There's an issue here around definitions. And so I'm a boarded pathologist. That includes anatomic pathology, and anatomic pathology absolutely includes forensics. There's a part on my board exam that talks about, that includes forensics. And I perform every autopsy that comes through the ME's office is a forensic autopsy by definition. I absolutely perform those. What I am not is a board-certified forensic pathologist with board subspecialization in forensics. And those pathologists typically are the guys that, that do the homicides, the cases that are going to end up in court. But most of the forensic autopsies, and by that I mean autopsies that were unwitnessed deaths, those are routinely handled by board-certified pathologists like myself, like Dr. Sudolovski. We're absolutely qualified to do this work. And it's codified in state statute that we're, that we're qualified to do this work. And so it's a bit of a misrepresentation to say, Supervisor Angus, that, that we're not qualified. In fact, it's-
I didn't say that. I just asked a question.
You, you-
I just asked a question.
Fair enough. I don't want to argue the point. But we're absolutely qualified to do this work. We do it routinely.
In Yuma, I'm sorry, you, are you down?
No, I'm fine.
Who, who does your, the ones that have to be seen by the forensic pathologist for-
So if there's a murder case or a case that we think is going to end up in court, we send those to Pinal County. And County Manager Elters mentioned in a previous meeting that, that there is some, there's some extra cost to the county to send those cases there. But because we handle all of the other stuff, it's like, it's like paying, it's like paying a quarterback salary to your whole offensive team. You know, most of those cases don't need a forensic pathologist. It's board subspecialized.
Okay. You said you can ramp up really fast, but what about the vehicles, the investigators, things like that?
I mean, yeah, that would be difficult. It would be challenging. But, you know, we, we don't, we're not-
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we're kind of, you know, going-
No, we're not.
In the weeds. Well, excuse me, this is my meeting.
Fair enough.
Thank you very much. I, I think that we need to, these are questions that will come up. I think we've, I don't know, we haven't taken a vote, but it's looking like that they're going to make it for the next, the next board, as it should. This board, three people are not going to be here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I know we're trying to wrap this up. I just had a couple of small questions for Manager Elters, if I could.
Okay.
And I'm going to need more time to go through this information because I haven't had it for less than a week. So for the, for the vehicles, the used vehicles, if you're saying in the transition, it's going to cost the county two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-nine dollars to essentially purchase used vehicles from the current provider? Is that what you're saying?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Lingefelter, we asked the current provider for equipment, list, and mileage and so on, and what it would cost if we were to purchase them equipped and ready to go. The answer is the number that you have. We also checked it against the Kelley Blue Book values, and we believe it is a reasonable number. So if we were to buy them, and it would make, it would perhaps be a good economic decision to do so because they do, they have a varying life cycle. So as it comes time to replacement, we can replace them gradually, not all at one time. If we were to not buy them and go buy comparable equipment, we provided the value as well, and it would be higher because we have to buy the equipment and then equip it, Supervisor.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, that it sounded as though if the county chose to purchase some or all or none, that those were available, and that would be what the total use cost would be. And then the same, the same with the FFME. It looked like there was a, if, there was, this was, this is the list that's available. If we took everything, it would be a hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-seven-hundred. Whether or not we need all of that stuff, I don't know.
Yeah. Madam Chair, Supervisor Lingefelter, we believe the equipment that is listed, it's equipment we would need because it's currently, and, and we did, we did validate that with Dr. Cross from Yavapai County, as far as, I mean, she's a locum, she's familiar with this equipment and, and its conditions. We can purchase it, we would need it. So we can either purchase it at the value, you know, emeritus to the, the value that is prescribed or buy it new. We, we, we just list, we provided the board both options to make you aware of what the cost would be.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anything else? All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair?
No action.
Yeah.
We'll take no action.
Yeah, consistent with, with what Supervisor Gould has said, I'm going to need some more. There's a lot of data. I'm going to, I'd like, I'd like to have some more time to, to review it before I make any votes.
But I believe we still have to talk about the contract because it's up on November thirtieth.
Does it, Madam Chair?
I don't think-
Does it go month to month?
Madam Chair, Supervisors, the, there's current language in the contract that says we can go month to month, uh, month to month. Excuse me. I think if it, you know, if it is two to three months, it would be different than if it was to go longer. We would ask the board to consider the implication. The month-to-month status has made it more difficult for the current, for the incumbent to hire, because there's uncertainty. What we heard from the hospital, let me back up really quick. There are three legs to this stool. We're talking about two of them. The third one, we really have not addressed. But whatever the board wishes to go in that direction, it's going to take time to have, to equip, to, to acquire, remodel, equip a morgue, and, and then transfer the individuals. We truly believe if we were to transfer and when, it would be better to do so in a transitional manner, meaning bringing in personnel first, and then bringing in equipment, and, and then completing the, the rest of it. It honestly looks like it takes an absolute minimum of six months, possibly a little bit longer. And with the hospital telling us, if we were to go in that direction, they would need a year. And we're telling you, if we were to go the county building, we would need a year. Our suggestion to you is allow enough time for this to remain in place and for us to transition. We can start that transition within a year. Three months for the personnel, six months for the equipment, and complete it as the morgue, whichever site the board chooses, is being remodeled and, and getting ready for a turnkey operation. So, you know, our, our recommendation to the board is to consider, if you'd like, you can do- can do an extension of, of six months, and, and then we can, with guidance as to, as to what to do with the third leg, and then report to you along the way. Or you can go longer. You can go shorter too, but that would not be our recommendation. We just need time. We don't really wanna, we do not want to fall flat on our faces and stub our toes in this process. We wanna do it in the dignified manner that you would want to see.
Anything, Supervisor Bishop? I'm waiting for Supervisor Johnson to come back.
I don't know if he's coming back, but-
He left.
I kinda like the idea of putting the morgue in the county building in the Kingman area, maybe extending this contract until the new board can, can follow up and make more concrete decisions, hopefully on, on the Kingman location.
So what is that timeframe in your head?
I would go for at least another year extension.
Yeah.
So that the new board can get comfortable with their positions and-
Right. This is a lot of stuff to be changing, and we still, and this board hasn't made really a decision on what direction. We have three new people coming in, it's gonna take them time, so-
Transition.
Yeah.
I agree, so I don't think a year is-
Okay, so you wanna put that in a motion?
Unreasonable. I will put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I will second that. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, well, a motion fails. I, I'm not gonna make another motion, so who wants to make another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Um, we're not, I'm not done with that. We actually have one more item on the agenda.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
See if I can get a second.
In light of no motion, I, I believe that, it's not an ideal situation, but I think that the current contract does go month to month. Is that correct?
The, the contract does allow for month to month, I just think that we're running into problems.
Can I, can I then ask Mr. Hassett if that is something that he's still willing to do? I mean, we've kind of keep him on a-
I would like to second Supervisor Gould, I'm excusing, sorry. Madam Chair, Supervisors. What, in, in all seriousness, we, we're coming up on the, we would have been here, this is coming to a year from, if we had done this in January or February. You guys have got a lot on your plate, a lot of information to digest, as Supervisor Lingefelter has said, and you also have a new board coming in. So I can understand that in 60 days, all of this could mean something completely different to everybody. But at the end of the day, this county, they don't need me, they don't need KRM C, they don't need any other pathologists. They can do this in-house, and I think if there's a way that we can figure out how to set benchmarks in place, staff-required benchmarks, and not, and even provider benchmarks, the reality of it is, I work for you, okay? You have my time. Upon my departure, my availability could, you know, become nothing. I would like to see, maybe you afford me the opportunity to meet with your department heads and let us put together a better plan to provide to you that is in the form of a renewal, but a tiered process in an effort to, to move this over to county. It can be done. I know for a fact it can be done. Is it two and a half million, to be quite honest with you? No. But this is also a landlord, giving you a list of tenant improvements that you're gonna pay for on a building that you don't own, that they will then have on their balance sheet. So let's be realistic on that, right? I would like an opportunity to work with your staff, your directors, as well as the managers, excuse me, Manager Elters, and provide something to your new board in January that is a tier, in the form of a tiered renewal program, that at the end, as we work towards transitioning bits and pieces over to the county, at the end, I will ride off into the sunset, and then you have a medical examiner's division in-house.
Okay.
Is that a clap?
So, yeah, but not for the reason you were thinking.
Is that from you? Wow!
Yes, so this month to month, until you get that going?
Yes, ma'am. That was a really long-winded answer to Supervisor Lingefelter.
Well, because the only thing that we keep hearing is that it's so hard to keep employees if there's the unknown about what's gonna happen to them.
We've, we've lost some staff, and we're in the process of trying to hire, one of them messaged us the other day and said, "I'm not doing anything till I see what happens on the 18th." We've had to issue memorandums of understanding that your employment is, is day-by-day here. It is very difficult, but I do have the utmost confidence in my existing staff and my team that we can get through 60 days in order to put together a solid transitionary plan. So yeah, yes, I would go month to month, but I would really love the opportunity to, to allocate their time, to meet with me, to put together a solid plan.
Okay. How's that sound?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I want to say thank you for your comments, Mr. Hassett, and I would absolutely agree that there needs to be a clear path for staff. Absolutely. I think that sounds reasonable.
So can I get 60 days?
Can I get 60 days? Anyone wanna make a motion for 60 days?
Madam Chair, is that to bring back a transition plan, working with staff?
Yeah, I, I think, well, actually, I don't even know, so that you'd have, I, I could have-
Yeah, you might as well ask the staff.
Speaking for other folks.
I hope I'm not speaking on a churn. I think what we could present in 60 days is potentially an amendment for this board's consideration that details what a phased approach would look like, that would detail sort of a scope of services revision with benchmarks in there. I don't think, to County Manager Elters' point, it has not addressed the idea of where those facilities are that we'd be operating out of, and all the rest of it. But I think it would at least take care of the transition of staff to county staff, what it would look like if we were to buy out used equipment, things like that. I think we could do that in the form of an amendment, in the form of an amendment. And I think, if you're saying 60 days, I guess it would be the fir, the second meeting in, in January or the first meeting in February.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would take the question to the top, and ask Manager Elters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Answer, Supervisor Lingefelter, I appreciate you directing the question to me. Brand-new board, starting in January, will need to digest what this board has been faced with and provided in the way of information. We've got a, an current provider that is willing to work with us, understands the board's, the board's desire is to bring it in-house. Just, I, I think, instead of, you know, putting a, in a superficial deadline on us, maybe just acknowledge that and allow a little bit more time, maybe, maybe three months, just so, so we can bring it to you, the board, and, and the new board can be comfortable in making a decision. I, I, I really, it's clear, the board wants to bring it in-house, and we wanna see that happen. We'll bring the, the personnel and we'll bring the equipment. Ultimately, we need a facility, and that has to be settled, and it's not gonna settle until January, so-
Right, we got it.
That's really my reason. Again, we'll march to the board-
Right.
Orders, but that would be, to answer your question. Thank you.
We're gonna be on the board, so what do you think?
I already have a month to month anyway.
Yeah.
He's asking for a little bit more.
I'm, I'm a little confused what the, what the motion would be. It, it sounds-
Extend, I think to extend the contract for 60 or 90 days.
I think it's already covered under a month to month, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, but he can just, yeah.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, can we just put an agenda item that myself and these directors will provide updates in the December, in every single meeting going forward, as, as we work towards a transitionary plan, not to exceed 90 days? And I'll stay month to month?
You will? Okay.
So maybe whatever, I don't know what that needs to look like.
The unknown is if-
Yes.
He's gonna stay. I mean, you know, if we keep circling around.
Thank you. Let us speak at every meeting to provide updates. It can be done, is it, is it gonna be done overnight? No. But the first thing we have to worry about's the people. So, I don't know what that needs to look like, but short answer, yes, I'll stay as long as we can have mic time at every meeting going forward.
Okay, so what would that agenda, what would that motion sound like? Anyone?
Madam Chair, Supervisor, it would be to continue under the current contract on a month-to-month basis, with staff working with the current provider and reporting to the board once a month for the, for the next few months, no more than three, to get this transition complete. To, to provide a plan that the new board can digest and approve, that will give us specific direction going forward.
Okay.
Madam Chair, to move the item forward, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second, we have a motion in second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so, before we go to the last item for today, I want to take a moment to say that this will be my last meeting. I will be tending as the Mojave County Supervisor, representing District Two. I have commitments to attend to my new position as State Senator, representing Legislative District Thirty. It has been my greatest honor to serve in this position and represent the people of Bullhead City, the ones that saved my life and then gave me a life better than I could have ever dreamed for myself. To my constituents, I want to thank you for believing in me and blessing me with three terms in what I believe is the greatest job in government. I hope to take that experience to the state and stand up for local government and for our great elected leaders of our four cities and the county. I want to thank our terrific county staff. I am proud to have worked with all of you. I have been blessed to work with two wonderful county managers, first Mike Hendricks and now Sam Elters. Contrary to what some may think, it is not easy to report to five elected officials who all have very strong opinions on how things should be run, hence what you just saw. Thank you, Sam, for everything you have done and will do in the future. Thanks to our clerk of the board, Laura Scooball, and I pray that Tariq, Tarek wins the Cy Young Award. We're all watching. I also want to thank the people who stand up here, meeting after meeting, to comment either at the call of public or on the agenda items. I don't always agree with what you said or how it is said, but it's always interesting and at times entertaining. Thank you all for being involved. My greatest hope for the next board and for the future is that we can all discuss issues civilly, with respect to each other. And as we approach the holiday season, I wish everyone good health, love, and happiness. God bless you all. So, the next item is, I brought it back for reconsideration, it was, I don't know if it was last meeting or the one before, and we, I think we didn't do the right thing to kick it down and, down to the new board, because the new board has no history with our county manager. This is to review his work for this year and to award him with a, with a 5% salary raise, which I think that he deserves over and over again. So first, I need a motion to reconsider.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And now B, and this is to approve a pay raise of 5% to the county manager's current annual salary, effective November 7, 2024, and I will make that motion. I know you did, I know you did, but as my last act as outgoing Chairman of the Board, I'm not gonna let you disparage my employee.